Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 21 regular City Council meeting. You would join me in the pledge of — I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council, myself, in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your held it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is special business. It, AB 7593, is the Hall of Fame recognition. I would like to ask Fred Butler and David Kapler to please join me at the lectern for this presentation. So, a few weeks ago, our community members nominated some amazing people for our Hall of Fame, and many of you in the Hall of Fame are already here this evening, and listed up on the plaques that we have over there. Thank you so much for joining us. From Ruth Keyes to Harvey Manning, the impressive list of Issaquah Hall Fame of inductees truly embodies the best of our community. Over the years and through their many contributions to Issaquah, members of the Hall of Fame have raised the bar with their inspiring examples of service, leadership, and civic-mindedness. And tonight, I'm proud to add two to our Hall of Fame. Dave Kapler. First, I'd like to honor the affectionately known, great trailmaker, David Kapler. For the past four decades, David has made a lasting impact on Issaquah's sustainability, including our people, prosperity, and environment. David's happy place is the great outdoors, and his passion for open space is infectious. As an original founder of the Issaquah Alps Trail Club and Mountain Sound Greenway, he has helped preserve countless forested areas throughout the Issaquah Alps. Region-wide, Issaquah is known as Trailhead City, and many of the trails that inspired that nickname are thanks to David's tireless work. David also served on the Issaquah City Council for almost two decades, and during a pivotal time in our history, when two master-planned communities were formed, each development preserved massive amounts of open space. Today, David continues to work, oftentimes behind the scenes, to advocate for public lands at the local, state, and regional level. As one community member said, "David is an inspiring example to all of us in portraying how one person can effectively engage in and make their community stronger and better." Thank you for your service, Dave. Next, I'd like to recognize our former mayor, Fred Butler. Fred is a true public servant. He first served for 27 years in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and then became Seattle City Light Chief Engineer. Besides his lovely wife, Rose Marie, who's here this evening, Fred has one other true love, and that is Issaquah. Fred has served this community for more than two decades, first as a council member for 14 years, and then as Issaquah's mayor from 2014 to '17. Fred's passion for mass transit is known throughout the region. As a member of the Sound Transit Board, Fred successfully ensured that light rail to Issaquah was included in the ST3 package. Fred was also instrumental in welcoming Swedish to Issaquah, creating the Costco Development Agreement, renovating Julius Bone Pool, and building the new skateboard park on Newport by State Route 900. His widespread influence was very clear in 2017, when he called a regional transportation summit and successfully brought together the King County Executive, 10 mayors, state legislators, King County Council members, Washtau Metro, and Sound Transit to one event. Fred truly cares about our citizens and is known for walking around the town to check in with community members, including local business owners, young families at the playground, and members of our senior center. There's not too many folks around town who haven't met Fred at least once. Thank you, Fred, for all of your service. So, just to make sure everyone is aware, the Hall of Fame, past recipients, and the two we're honoring tonight are all displayed on our plaques here, and we're so proud of the long list of people and our two new inductees. So, let's all give them one more hand. And at this time, I'd also like to have a five-minute recess so that we can all go out in the hall and congratulate them and thank them before we begin our business meeting.
Yay!
Yay! (laughter)[343.12]
It's exciting to see that collaboration. We all know that everyone from Sammamish comes to Issaquah, and there's even Issaquah that heads towards Sammamish. So I think we all also really care deeply about the developments that are happening in our areas. We have a lot of people up in Sammamish that are very concerned and are really happy about our moratorium and wanting to keep it longer to look at planning, and same here. And one of the things that drew us all here was the beautiful mountains. I've lived here since 2003. We purposely bought an old home so that we wouldn't be part of cutting down trees. And I'm part of a group that I got involved with called Save Cougar Mountain, and everyone in green, or not quite in green, but wearing a tag, is part of our group. And we just represent a very large amount of people in our area who don't want to see Cougar Mountain get developed. And I have a flyer that I'll give to our city clerk as well, but we have the Bergsma development that's threatening the beauty of our whole area. I know I'm probably not the only one in agreeing with me. When I now drive down I-90 and I see those huge apartments that are all being built in that big pasture land, I feel really sad. And so I don't want to feel even more sad when I look at Cougar Mountain and see this horrible eyesore, the development smack dab in the middle. I work at a school, I work at Discovery Elementary, and I recently was reading a book to some first graders about Teddy Roosevelt. And I don't know if you're aware of this, very quick story I'll tell you, that Teddy Roosevelt ended up meeting John Muir, and John Muir wanted to show him this beautiful land that he loved. So he took Teddy Roosevelt on a camping trip, and there's a really wonderful picture book about it. And Teddy Roosevelt was astounded by this beautiful land. And John Muir said, you know, it's gonna be gone pretty soon. I'm really sad, I hope you can do something about it. And Teddy Roosevelt did. And thanks to him, we have our national parks. And as we all know, Teddy Roosevelt was a president that really saved these areas and made national parks. We're at that same crossroads. I can't feel any more strong about this, that we can't keep allowing these developments. It's getting so terrible for all of us. And the more people I talk to, I have yet to find someone who disagrees, except the developers. And we want our cities to care about their families and the citizens, not the developers. So I just ask of you that you will really look at the possibility of saving this area Cougar Mountain, working with King County to create some funding where you can buy that land and allow us to continue having that beauty. And I know that you'll feel very proud to be doing something that Teddy Roosevelt did a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Lots of hands in the air. I should now, but I should by now know what my comments are before public audience comments, but I forgot a couple of things. I can see a lot of badges out there tonight, and so we do have a large contingent from, say, Cougar Mountain again. If there is a spokesperson that would like to get up and speak, that would be great. And if there are members that would like to add new information to that, we would appreciate that as well. Is there anyone else willing to speak, since we have nobody signed up this evening?
Not really into that, sorry.
Doesn't have to be.
Oh, okay.
Yep, come on over to the microphone.
Sweet. Okey-dokey. My name is Mike Abraham. I lived in Issaquah for about 14 years. So I'm just up in the highlights. I believe there's something on today's calendar for-
Can you state your address too for the record?
Oh, sure.
Because the clerk does record it with the address.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, 238-18, Southeast 59th Street, Issaquah, 98029.
Thank you.
So there's something today regarding an ADU. So it's gonna be a reduction from something a little bit bigger to just a limit of 1,000 square feet. So I don't think that's gonna serve the purpose of an ADU because if you're gonna go through the hassle and the cost of building, you should build something that's gonna be a good size, that's gonna accommodate the family. As far as like, in previous surface and driveway, almost everything is gonna be the same, except just the square footage is not gonna be the same. So I, just against the 1,000 square feet limit on the whole ADU thing. So that's all.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anyone else willing, wanting to come up and talk to council this evening? Elizabeth.
My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I live at 100 Big Bear Place on Squawk Mountain in Issaquah. I wanted to share with you something that came to my attention this week, or last week. There's a woman who fled domestic violence and became homeless, and who has been helped by people from a number of different faith communities in this area over the last month or so. She has a service animal, and that kind of limits places she can go. She's been trying to find some long-term housing because she has a job that she does by telephone, and she needs a place that's quiet and steady where she can carry on conversations on the phone. Shelters don't do it for her. Tenti doesn't do it for her. We don't have a lot of housing around here that's affordable for people who are on very low income. And as I thought about the dormitories that sat unused at Providence Heights for four years and may now be demolished, that kind of housing, it's small, you know? They were designed for just two people, but this would be wonderful shelter for people like this woman. The faith community can't afford to put her up in a hotel forever. We did because she was sick, but there needs to be some place that people who are recovering can go and be safe and get on their feet. And we also need some kind of shelter for couples. We have stuff for single men and single women and families and youth, but nothing for couples. Those dorms would have been great. So keep thinking creatively. We have stuff in this community that could be used to house even our poor residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. A couple of hands in the air. Anyone else liking to speak this evening to council? Connie is making her way over.
So I'm Connie Marsh, and I live up on Squawk Mountain. I'm gonna start with Elizabeth's comments, which are, we're looking at a subsidy of a substantial amount of public dollars for new development to get affordable housing. And I'm talking about the transit-oriented development whole ball of puzzled wax. Reimagining that money, if you were to use it toward affordable housing, why aren't we investing in places that already exist and turning those into low-income housing where those who really, really need it can find a safe place to stay? That, to me, seems to be more of a priority than continuing to try to create a new housing for those who at least can exist. Now, second, you could use a lot more money to purchase forested land, which we also need in this town. So when you're looking at where you invest the dollars, it seems like we need to have a public conversation about what the community wants to do with our money. I don't think that the council has the luxury of just saying, well, we're going to decide without talking to us, because there's so many voices that need to have this conversation. This is the same conversation with transportation. People are cranky with congestion, yet every, we have a split town as to how to solve congestion, if it is solvable. And we need to have the community conversation to educate people and help them to understand the decisions that everybody is trying to make for a long-term Issaquah. Now, the last one is the visions that you have in your packet, and whether I like them or not. So the visions are better. They have the potential to get us more of what we want. I am concerned that the implementation is not in place, and unless staff is totally on board with this, we will not get anything different than we had before, because really they don't give us the code language to say, you shall do something. And so until a process is established that brings staff to the table with a developer before anything is done, we're gonna get the same old thing again. Otherwise, go forth and conquer.
Thank you, Connie. Mary?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I just want to ditto what Elizabeth said and also what Connie said. Specifically, I'll start with the vision portion of it. This is the second go-round that I've spent many, many of my volunteer hours trying to rewrite the visions this time. My concern, like Connie, is I don't see that we have the staff, or that we've seen any idea of what the code is going to look like. And I would take it one step further than what Connie said. I think when the next time we sit down with a developer in the city, if this moratorium is lifted, we need to have a panel of those of us that have served as volunteers and contributors to these vision statements. Because what I saw go forth, the last two Development Commission meetings, we didn't get what we thought we were gonna get out of that new development. And I think that's partly because the city staff wasn't fully on board with what some of the concerns were. So until we hire and we really integrate what those visions are, put it to code, I question whether we're gonna be able to get it. And I've wasted my time again, which I'm not gonna do it again. I will serve on an overview site panel, though. That being said, would like to, I've written a letter to the mayor and have talked to Parks Board about tree canopy. And I and several people have talked many times about tree canopy. Just on Friday, we got another email, noticed that with Riva, for some reason, they're gonna want to cut down trees on our, the south side of Newport Way. That is part of native growth protection easement, as well as a screening easement, that were commitments made with those developments and the property owners on that side of the road. All of a sudden, via a little email we get, oh, those trees are going. No, why, when, and what's gonna be replaced, as far as the number of trees that are being removed, because those are large maple trees that are being removed. I would like some feedback on that. The last thing, since it's short on time, I also want to talk about, hopefully, some of the money that we are spending towards traffic can go to actually having the police offer standing at intersections. I was almost run over trying to cross S-900 on Friday. Coming in tonight, there was a bicyclist who decided to get off his bike and use the crosswalk on Newport Way to cross Newport Way at S-900. We had people speeding up behind me, turning right, and almost hit that bicyclist. Had I not honked and he not done one last check, he would have been a dead person at the speed that was going. I also trying to get home tonight. The intersections all along Front Street are consistently blocked by through traffic. I'm trying to get home, and I could not turn left off of Front Street onto Sunset because of people trying to cut onto Front Street and blocking the entire intersection. We need to have police officers present to teach behaviors not to block intersections, not to cross, block crosswalks. And I support the first one about the crosswalk on Bush. We need that.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Julie? Oh, no, your support. There's hands of support. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Second call? Anyone like to address council? Last call. Seeing no one else, audience comments are closed, and we will move to committee and regional reports. And we will start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 17th, I attended the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council meeting, and I'd like to provide two highlights from that meeting. Firstly, we reviewed the project subcommittee's 2018 grant recommendations supporting conservation, education, and outreach. And one project that was discussed was the Lower Issaquah Creek Stream and Riparian Restoration Design. This is the City of Issaquah project, and the Salmon Recovery Council voted to unanimously approve the project subcommittee's recommendations. The grants are not yet fully approved because it still has another step. It will also need to be approved by the King County Flood Control District, and that will happen, that review process will happen later in the summer. And we also heard about the City of Kirkland's Yard Smart Rain Rewards Residential retrofit program. This is a program that provides incentives for homeowners to reduce the volume and pollution levels of stormwater. And the next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be Thursday, July 19th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Services and Safety Committee met on May 9th here in council chambers. There are a number of issues we took up, many of them are on tonight's consent agenda. We took up Agenda Bill 7595 to amend the salary ordinance. We took up Agenda Bill 7565, an inter-fund loan extension for the roadway improvement, and Agenda Bill 7601, Eastside Fire and Rescue Memorandum of Understanding related to maintenance of city-owned facilities. All of those were moved to consent for this evening. The committee also received an update on the 2019-2020 applications for UVA Services funding. And then finally, we took up Agenda Bill 7596, Property Tax Reduction Request via King County Public Benefits Rating System. That's a mouthful. And that is on regular business day, and we'll be having a public hearing about that shortly. The next meeting will be on June 12th at 6:30 here in council chambers. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on May 10th at 4 o'clock. Councilmember Goodman and I attended via telephone, kind of breaking some new ground. That allowed us to participate in the council retreat. Key things on the agenda was an update from the chief on PFOS and the water supply. The board considered modifications to director roles and responsibility to permit board members to participate via telephone. And finally, we looked at the implementation of a new compliance engine to help with our fire marshal function. The next Eastside Fire and Rescue meeting will be on June 14th at 4 o'clock, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee met last Thursday, the 17th. A couple items of note. One is on consent agenda tonight, the curb ramp enhancement project, so that's on consent. The other one noted, there's discussion on the traffic coming in Old Town. And it appears that that has been very successful in many ways, but there is one part of it that was not successful. And there was a group of folks, that the chicanes on Andrews are very troublesome for the neighborhood as a whole in their area because of parking and other things that kind of came together in that one spot. So it was a request that we remove those as soon as possible because they're causing major problems in how the neighborhood street functions. But all the other ones seem to be doing the job, and the report on that is that the speeds have reduced through that part of Old Town, and it's, those things have done what they want, except for the chicane. So just let those folks know, there have been discussions following that meeting. I've discussed these things with the mayor and the engineers as well, and those discussions are continuing to consider their requested actions. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Growth Management Policy Board has not met since our last council meeting. Our next meeting for the GMPP is May, excuse me, June 7th, and the primary issue or agenda will be, item will be the establishing the scope for the Vision 2040 update. And then Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has not met since our last meeting, and we have, our next meeting isn't planned either. So that concludes my report.
There you go. Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore had a special meeting last week, May 15th, and there was one item on the agenda, and it's on regular business for tonight. It's Agenda Bill 7344, Central Issaquah District Visions. It's the last item to be completed under the moratorium. And the next Land and Shore meeting will be the first Thursday of June, I believe that's June 7th, and the agenda has not been set. That's my report.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, May 8th at 7:00 PM in Renton City Hall. There was no discussion of proposed action. And the King County Growth Management Policy Council, GMPC, will next be meeting on Wednesday, May 30th at 4:00 PM in PSRC Chambers. They will be considering a school siting motion. Unfortunately, I am going to be in Vancouver, B.C. for a meeting involving microneedles for drug delivery for my other job. So I will not be able to attend, but we will pick, SCA will be well-covered.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much for all your work out in the region and your reports back tonight. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have a series of community activities and then some issue updates to give this evening. So on May 8th, I facilitated a meeting in the box for our strategic plan with about 20 seniors at our senior center, and we followed that with a question and answer session. I also attended the 39th Annual Community Awards hosted by the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, where we announced Fred Butler and David Kapler as our 2018 City of Issaquah Hall of Fame Award recipients. On May 10th, I supported the Walk to School event along with Superintendent Ron Thiely and greeted students on foot and on bike as they headed to school in the morning. On May 12th, I was the guest speaker at the American Association of Universities Women's Issaquah Chapter Regular Meeting, and on the 15th, at the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board's Regular Meeting. I attended the YWCA Inspire Luncheon in Seattle on May 15th, and also facilitated a meeting in the box with a neighborhood group on that day. On May 17th, I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Adara Surgical Institute in Issaquah. And May 16th, I was the guest speaker at an event with the Issaquah Nursing and Rehabilitation Center on Front Street. On May 18th, I led a mayor's forum at the senior center with Issaquah's former mayors, Hanson, Heinz, Freysenger, and Butler. I thought I'd provide a couple of updates on some issues that we've been talking about over the last few months. Moratorium, as you heard this evening, Central Issaquah Visions AB-7344 is on regular business this evening. As Councilmember Goodman mentioned earlier during her report, the committee met twice in May to conclude its deliberations on the proposed changes to the Central Issaquah Visions, and the item will be discussed this evening. If the council approves the Central Issaquah Visions, the moratorium enacted in September 2016 will be lifted. I did not have an update on the Cougar Mountain Bergsma development this evening. The ending of development agreements for Talis, the Planning Policy Commission held a public hearing on May 10th for consideration of the proposed zoning designation for parcel nine. That was at a referral from the council. The PPC heard a staff presentation and took testimony from the public. The commission concurred with the administration's original recommendation that Talis parcel nine should be designated GV-MF, and this item will return to city council on June 4th. The Southeast 62nd Street, which is the project connecting Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway into the development with Costco, there will be some activity this week. Prefabricated arch sections for the undercrossing on the Eastlake-Sammamish Trail are being delivered on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 29th and 30th. Deliveries will occur approximately every half hour between 9:30 and 3:30 PM each day using oversized wide loads. The truck haul route is I-90 to SR-900, exit 15, going north onto, across I-90 to Northwest Sammamish Road to Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway. The trucks will then travel south along Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway to Southeast 67, where they will exit the road to make their delivery. This will cause some delays, and drivers should expect slow-moving vehicles. This is an important piece of our completion of this project, where we can create the separation between the trail and our new streets in there. We are also looking, we are also starting our Northwest Gilman Boulevard project. There is a need to improve Northwest Gilman Boulevard from State Route 900 to Front Street for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users and drivers. Together with Issaquah residents, corridor users, and local business owners, the city's developing a plan this year that will document the community's vision for the corridor and strategize on how to implement that vision. Our community engagement phase of this project is now underway. The online survey is live, and we hope to hear from everyone who works, plays, or lives in Issaquah. The purpose of the survey is to document the project goals and identify the range of possible improvements for Gilman Boulevard. The survey is open until July 13th, 2018. There will also be business workshops and a community open house scheduled for July 11th at 6:00 PM at the Pickering Barn. As the events get closer, we'll have additional details to announce. You can visit the project's website page at issaquahwa.gov/gilman, and you can take the online survey, sign up to receive updates, or learn more about the project. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. First, have the payables and payroll for May 21st been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Yes, I would wish to bring down Agenda Bill 7577, Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards Amendment, eliminating new hotels, motels, timeshare lodging, conference centers, and self-storage units in specific zones within Central Issaquah to the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We don't need a second.
But you got one anyway.
It's okay.
Okay. All those in favor, oh, never mind.
Just do it.
So that will be moved to Item A under regular business. Is there any other items that council would like to move down from the consent calendar? So, motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as amended.
Thank you. That needs a second.
Second.
So it was moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public hearing for AB-7596, Property Tax Reduction Request via King County Public Benefit Rating System. This item is coming out of Council Services and Safety Committee, and the recommendation this evening is to approve the resolution. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to invite David Faver, Development Services Manager, and Bill Berenstein, King County Public Benefit Rating Systems Program Manager, to make a presentation.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I'll kick this off and then turn it over to Bill Bernstein, King County Program Lead. This is a request for property tax reduction through a King County program. It provides an incentive to help preserve certain public benefits, and in this case, it's a historic landmark structure up on Squawk Mountain, a single-family house at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive. As you mentioned, the Services and Safety Committee reviewed this May 9th and supported the Project 3O. This requires a two-step process through local government, city action, which is on your agenda tonight, and then council action that Bill takes and bundles with King County. So I'm gonna turn over to Bill to talk a little about the program and the proposal briefly. Thanks.
In terms of switching through the slides? Well, thank you for having me. I'll try to keep this brief. We have the landowners present who, it'd be great to hear from them after I have a few words. They could speak much more interestingly about their property probably than I can. But in terms of the program, as Dave was mentioning, it's a two-step process, and so we're here hopefully seeking your approval for this property's enrollment, and then I'll take it back to the county. But essentially, the program is all about a property tax reduction in exchange for resource protection, or in this case, historic landmark status and protection. As it's listed here, we do have a process that we must follow, which is dictated by state law, RCW 8434 in this case. And then also, our program is defined within King County Code, Chapter 2036. Typically, it's a, essentially, a six-month process from application receipt to final action, which must occur, in this case, by July 1st in terms of both city and county This property's qualification is very straightforward. The program is based on a point system. We have about 25 or so different resource categories that properties can qualify for. One of those happens to be property designated as a historic landmark, as this property was designated back in 2017. So by that designation, it opens the door for the Millers to apply to the program and seek a property tax reduction for the .28 acres of the property that I'm recommending be enrolled in the program. As we've kind of already stated, we're holding this public hearing, and then these various steps, including the recommendations from, giving recommendation to you and then taking it to the county. it to the county. Again, with regard to this property, it's fairly straightforward. The designation is in place. It's recorded on title, and so therefore, the qualification is pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions you have just about how the program works or how the tax savings are implemented, and I'll just leave it there.
Would the council like me to have the property owners come up now to provide more information, or wait till you're done with questions? No preference?
No.
No preference? How about now? If Mark and Beth Lynn would like to come up and provide some additional -- you're not required to, but you can if you would like to. State your name and address for the record.
She got it.
I got it. 350.
I know.
We are Mark and Beth Lynn Miller. I'm Mark. And she's Beth Lynn. We live at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive Southwest in a home that was built actually collaboratively with Skip Rowley and William Conrady. I don't know if you remember it, Skip?
I do.
But --
I'm historic.
You're historic. This house is representative of what is known as mid-century modern architecture. It is built after a design by the architect Eichler, so it is an Eichler home, which consists of post-and-beam construction, and so each beam that runs laterally through the house has three posts that hold it up. The entire back of the home, for the most part, is glass, and looks out over -- well, it used to look out over the valley. Now, it just looks at large trees. And so, but the property is interesting in that it has not really been modified, as we understand it. I think, Bill, it's one of the few unmodified or unmuddled mid-century moderns around, in that it is the basic architecture is still intact. We have a bomb shelter. So, it won't fit all of you, but I'll be selling tickets afterward if anyone wants to purchase one. But it's really an amazing place, and we learned that once we filed it as a landmark and it was approved, we learned that there was an opportunity to get some tax relief. And so, that's kind of the basis of why we're here. Anything else you would add about it?
Probably why it was built the way it was.
That's interesting. Yeah, Mr. Conrady worked for the General Accounting Office in concert with the Atomic Energy Commission, and he had seen structures like this in Japan. He lived in an Eichler home in Bellevue before he came here and had this house built, and he strategically placed it at a point that was exactly -- it placed the mountain right between McCord Air Force Base and his home. And his studies indicated that if there was ever a nuclear assault in the area, it probably would be at McCord and Fort Lewis, and so he figured that he was placing the house in a place that was strategically the least exposed to a nuclear attack.
Wow.
Hence, the bomb shelter, which today is just a large storage area.
Thank you very much, Mark. That's very helpful. I'm going to ask the council now if they have any questions. Any questions from anyone who was up speaking today? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the program in general, not the specific property, but could you explain what happens regarding back taxes when a property owner leaves the program or sells the property and the new owner decides that they would like to leave the program?
Absolutely. So, it's important to note that there's no end date to an open space enrollment, and typically, what happens when a property changes ownership is that a buyer will elect to continue the open space designation at that time. If they elect to continue the open space designation, they carry -- they continue with the open space agreement, but they also carry the history in terms of any potential financial ramifications of coming out of the program. There is something called a compensating tax bill that comes into play if any property is withdrawn or removed from the program, and that essentially is made up of a seven-year past savings plus interest and potential penalty. And so, if the Millers were to sell and a buyer, for some reason, did not want to continue with the designation, they would be subject to that compensating tax bill. And that, again, never goes away. There's no end date to that calculation or that potential removal cost.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing no further questions, the Guidelines for Citizens comments also apply to those made under the public hearing, and I now open the public hearing at 7:55 p.m. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Second call for anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing, and third and final call. Public hearing is closed at 8:56. And Councilmember Ray?
I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number -- Approving the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space Classification of the Miller Property located at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive Southwest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to speak to it just briefly. Often in committees, we have to deal with some hard and thorny issues, and when this one came to the Services and Safety Committee, it was probably the most fun, I think, any of the committee members have ever had in listening to the stories about the house. I think this is an amazing piece of architecture. It clearly qualifies under the county laws, and I think it's something that we, as a community, will benefit from by preserving, so I am really excited about this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2018-08, Approving the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space Classification of the Miller Property Located at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive Southwest, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Next item on the agenda is regular business, and we'll be starting with AB-7577, Central Isqwa Development and Design Standards Amendment, Limiting New Hotels, Motels, Timeshare Lodging, Conference Centers, and Self-Storage Units in Specific Zones Within Central Isqwa. This item was moved down from the consent calendar this evening, and it is coming out of the Land and Shore Committee. I'd like to first invite Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Good evening. So, this Agenda Bill is proposed code amendments for Central Isqwa, and really, it's, I think, coming out of a sense that the current zoning and the land uses that are allowed in Central Isqwa are possibly too broad. And because there's not a lot of limitations in terms of what can be placed in Central Isqwa, there was a proposed code amendment brought about by the administration to limit the location for hotels and self-storage. And so, this went to the Planning Policy Commission, and then it came to Land and Shore. And so, what was proposed was to limit new hotels to the Pickering Neighborhood and to limit new storage to 221st and East Lakes Mammoth Parkway. And so, part of this was looking at the distribution of the existing storage facilities that we have, and those are shown with the black squares, and also the existing hotels, which are the red stars. The Pickering Neighborhood is north of I-90 and includes kind of the area around the Costco corporate campus. And as you can see, basically, our hotels are located right now in Rowley, Two and Pickering. This is the Motel 6 and the Holiday Inn, and then the new Marriott is down on Maple. As for the storage units, you can see they're kind of spread throughout Central Isqwa. We also have them up in the Highlands, but this was really a conversation about Central Isqwa, so I did not show that on the map. As we talk about hotels and why we have hotels in the city, part of, I think, trying to understand it a little bit better is looking at hotel stays and the kind of the breakout between leisure and business-related stays. And so, this is information -- unfortunately, we couldn't get in from data from all of our hoteliers, but we did from Hilton Garden Inn, Homewood Suites, and Marriott. And as you can see, the Marriott is tipped a little bit more leisure than business, but both the Hilton brands, Hilton Garden Inn and Homewood Suites, is much more business than leisure. And my guess is Holiday Inn would be similar because of its proximity to Costco, which is what generates a lot of our hotel stays. And then, from a storage perspective, and I apologize if this is hard to see, what we did is we did an inventory of storage units on the east side to kind of get a sense for kind of dispersion and whether or not we were getting a disproportionate share of storage units. You know, so here's information from what we consider our east side pure cities. Some information at the bottom relates to percentage of households that rent storage units. It's about just shy of 10%, and that 75% of those are either within two miles of where people live or where they work. So, there's definitely a kind of a proximity for use of storage. So, this is kind of the end of my presentation. It went through Planning Commission. Planning Commission talked about -- I have to kind of break these into two very different topics because they dealt with these two land uses very differently. For the hotels, the sense coming out of Planning Commission was that hoteliers will locate where it makes sense for them to locate, and they didn't feel like we needed to necessarily regulate the location of hotels. They also saw hotels, because they can range anywhere from large hotels to small boutique hotels, could really locate in many neighborhoods within Central Isqwa and be successful. On the flip side, storage was a much more divided debate, and there were some members on PPC that felt that storage was not a vibrant land use and should not be allowed at all in Central Isqwa, and others felt like it wasn't our place to regulate. So, it actually came out of Planning Policy Commission without a recommendation because they voted twice and it split 3-3 both times. So, it was actually deadlocked out of Planning Commission. So, then this made it to Land and Shore, and at Land and Shore, the recommendation was also to not approve these code limitations. So, that's kind of the history and where we are, and if you have questions, I'm here to answer.
Questions? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So, Keith, my understanding is that for storage units, that they could be built anywhere in Central Isqwa except as a mixed-use residential?
Yes.
So, if somebody wanted to, when the moratorium is lifted, make an application for -- put in a -- for a permit to put a storage unit anywhere along Gilman Boulevard could happen, right?
Yes.
Or in multiple adjacent properties?
So, basically, all of this except for this neighborhood down here.
Okay. And I also heard in the -- I can't remember if it was Land and Shore or Planning Policy, that there's a pretty huge demand for storage unit businesses.
So, as, you know, so one of the things about, you know, the statistic, if this is accurate, you know, basically 10%, so as you think about us adding thousands of more housing units to Central Isqwa, in theory, there will be an increased demand for additional storage, assuming the statistics stay accurate.
And Councilmember Goodman?
Well --
Anyone else?
Other questions?
Before we go back to questions or comments?
If there's no other questions, I'm going to --
Some questions. Councilmember Hunt?
So, the -- in the proposed amendment, there is allowed locations in Central Isqwa, which would be parcels fronting East Lakes Mammoth Parkway Southeast and 221st Place Southeast. And I -- could you explain why those are the proposed allowed locations?
I think partially because of the prevalence of storage now. So, right now, and if you think about kind of across the street from the Fred Meyer Shopping Center, you have a low-density, single-story storage facility there now. That's this particular one. There's also another couple parcels towards the north end of East Lakes Mammoth that, from a distribution standpoint, you could potentially see maybe another one up here. So, that made sense for East Lakes Mammoth, and 221st is the street with the Brown Bear Car Wash. There's also a storage unit on 221st, and so because it's kind of an out-of-the-way street, I think that was one of the reasons why that was proposed as an okay location for storage.
Deputy Council President Patis.
Thank you. Keith, where -- when talking about having the discussion about the storage units, were -- I'm trying to think of my question here. Was it taken into consideration that a lot of newer developments have their own internal storage units?
So, that was discussed at Planning Policy Commission. You know, what's happening, for the most part, is that storage and apartments are -- so, new apartments are generally not providing storage, and so, except they are providing garages, and some of the tenants do use their garages for storage, which then is a parking issue, and that's a whole other conversation. But most of it is actually happening separately. So, most multifamily builders are not providing like rentable storage units on their site. They could, but they -- but that's not what we've seen in either Atlas or Gateway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Ray?
Keith, can you go back a slide or two, where you show the comparison with the other cities?
Yes, that's this direction, I think. That one?
That one, yeah. So, and it's pretty small, but I count 10 in Bellevue and 7 in Isqwa. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
So, Bellevue has 140,000 people, so that's 14,000 people per place, and we have, say, 35,000, just to make my math easy, and that's about 5,000 per place. I'm just kind of curious because we seem to have a higher density of storage units here in Isqwa than some of our similar cities. Any insights into why that might be?
So, no. You know, the thing that's not telling here is number of units within each complex, and I could not get that information online, and this was an awful lot of phone calls to have to make. So, I don't know the absolute comparison in terms of like units. Some of the ones in Bellevue are older and smaller, but so, you know, I don't -- I can't answer that question. What I know is, based on one of the developers that's looking to develop one in Isqwa, that there is still, I think, an active market for additional storage units in Isqwa.
And then, my second question deals with property crime is, do you -- I mean, this is really sort of an unfair question to spring on you right now, but I'm just kind of curious if we've seen any kind of crime statistics, property crime statistics around storage units as opposed to other commercial uses.
I have not heard of any, and that was not something that came up either at PPC or Land and Shore.
Any other questions? So, Councilmember Goodman brought this down from consent, so I was going to give her some time to explain her reasoning for bringing it down this evening.
I make a motion and then explain her? I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number -- 2837. Amending Table 4.3B of the Central Isqwa Development and Design Standards to limit self-storage units to the mixed-use zoning district and strike all references to limits in the ordinance other than self-storage.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Can you reread that for me?
Reread it?
Because it's not -- I have -- Because it's not, I have another change, but I don't, I do not have that one.
Sure. I just wrote it, sorry. To adopt ordinance number, whatever you said.
2837.
Amending table, you can have this too when I'm done, 4.3B of the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards to limit self-storage units to the mixed-use zoning district and strike all references to limits in the ordinance other than self-storage. Yeah. Shoot. It's got my notes on the back. Okay. So the reason I brought it down is twofold. Number one, it's, for the same reason, we received an email from Steve Prair today who talks about the, I don't know if appropriate is the right word, but the preference for whether we put things on consent that are recommending denial, and particularly when a minority of the council members have seen the presentation at a committee meeting. So I think the preference, my opinion, the preference would be to recommend denial, but put it on the regular, regular consent agenda so that the majority of the council can see the presentation and deliberate. So that's one reason. And the second reason is because I, as my motion indicates, I favor limiting the, the storage units. The hotel part of it, and I realize that PPC and also Land and Shore, because I watched them, divided, thought, I think there was maybe a suggestion that it maybe could have been two agenda bills, but they were very distinct hotels and self-storage. I don't, I, at this point, don't favor limiting the hotels. I don't think that that agenda bill was very strong in, in the way that it suggested for the reasons that, I don't think the reasoning was very strong for why we needed to limit. The traffic just didn't resonate with me. There may be other reasons, but I don't think it was, those reasons were not presented. I don't know what those reasons would be. But the, the storage units, I'm concerned about not limiting storage units. As I, as my questioning indicated, they're allowed, and Keith said, they're allowed anywhere in Central Issaquah, there are no limitations. And I'm concerned about coming out of a moratorium and unintended consequences, and because of the demand and allowing the market to dictate where they might go, we would immediately get some applications for storage units in undesirable locations, particularly where we're looking to build vibrant areas in Central Issaquah along Gilman Boulevard. We already have one there now, and there were a lot, a lot of comments I heard in the community about, wow, that's really one of the first things we're getting in Central Issaquah. That's, that's not what we envisioned. And I've been talking to folks in the last couple of weeks, and they had no idea that our land use tables allow us to have storage units anywhere, and that we don't have any limits on them in the Central Issaquah area. So I think we should limit them. I think if we come out of the moratorium and we get that type of proposal, you know, I'm concerned about credibility. We've had this moratorium for all this long time, and we haven't considered something that we should have considered. And I just think we ought to limit them. That's why, that's why I made the motion, and that's, those are my reasons.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Councilmember Ramos, followed by Councilmember Hunt?
Yeah. I just want some clarification, because we didn't have quite all this there. When you say limited to mixed use, so.
Oh, you want to see that?
I want to see what that, do you have a slide or anything show that, where that is?
I don't have it up. I can do that really quickly. I believe that mixed use is all of East Lake and this piece of, of the Gilman neighborhood, but.
Can I point out that it's page 206 of the packet?
Thank you.
There's a map, there's a map with.
Can you pull up the packet, Keith? Page 206. While he's doing that, Councilmember Ramos, are you okay if I get Councilmember Hunt's question out of the table, too, or comment?
I had a, a very similar question, which is that in the agenda bill, there is the proposed allowed locations in Central Issaquah, and then it has the Central Issaquah zoning district as mixed use. And my understanding is that, that the motion does limit to the proposed allowed locations in Central Issaquah? Is that?
We need some more clarity.
So it's a question, yeah.
Okay. We need more clarity on both of those. And we have a figure out.
So mixed use is, is the purple.
Okay, so.
So it's mostly on the north side of 90, so here's 90. Mostly north side, here's where Microsoft's office buildings are, here's the Fred Meyer Shopping Center. But it does, it does spill onto the south side of 90 a wee bit.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
So, just to make sure I understand, Keith, the administration's recommendation was to limit it to mix, the mixed use, but there is a footnote that says, not only is it limited to mixed use, it's limited to the East Lake Samm 221st.
Yes.
And so, in the motion I made, it's the, the proposed, the table 4.3B, which includes the footnote. So my motion is the same as the administration's recommendation. So it doesn't limit it to the entire mixed use.
Gotcha.
Zone. It's exactly what the administration proposed, which is the East Lake Samm 221st.
So would not.
Provide clarity, Councilmember Hunt? And Councilmember Ramos? You've got the figure. Do you need more explanation?
So just to clarify, so East Lake Sam coming down, basically north of I-90 on East Lake Sam or 221st?
Right.
Nothing coming south of that. And of course, 221st stops quite a bit of ways before 90.
Right.
So just, okay. All right. Just wanted to have the boundaries identified.
You should know. That's a good question. Any other discussion? Council President Marts?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. First, let me speak to the process. The reason that this bill was moved the way that it was is, the mayor's office and I have been having a discussion about how to move bills forward, and full council is going to see a proposal on that subject very, very, very soon. But in the meantime, I think it's important when bills come back to the full council that there be someone on council, on the dais, who is an advocate for it. And we did not come out of that subcommittee meeting with such a person. And so I, we, and this is all part of the reasoning that we set in committee. Basically, it was to do what exactly we did this evening, which is put it on consent, and if somebody felt strongly about it, they would move it down, and here we are. So I think the process worked well. In terms of storage facilities, I'm troubled by exclusionary or prescriptive activities like this. I think it's one thing to be aspirational and to say, here's what we want to see, and here's the things that we're going to try to do to encourage what we want to see. But I don't think that storage facilities rise to the level of something, you know, I always, the joking thing that I always use is a tire shredding facility, right? We don't, we don't want to see a tire shredding facility in the central area. And I don't believe storage facilities rise to the level of tire shredding. I think that there were, there are definitely arguments actually in favor of them that came out of PPC, including the fact that for the tax revenue that they provide, they actually have a pretty small traffic footprint compared to other, other potential uses of the land. And so, I just think that my, my gut is to not prescribe how people can use their land unless there's a compelling reason to do so. And I don't find a compelling reason to do so this evening. And this is why I opposed it in committee and why I will oppose this amendment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Marts? I, Councilmembers Ramos and Hunt asked questions, so I would like to give you guys all an opportunity to discuss if you want to. Oh, Councilmember Ray.
So I just want to make a point, and when I think about the vision and the future of Central Issaquah, which is, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this later this evening, and we want a vibrant community, or part of the community, we want a place that is a live-work-play, we want a place that is walkable community, we want mixed use. And I, I kind of like the idea of moving our storage units into a region, because I think that they will take space in Central Issaquah that could have a use that would, would further our vision of that mixed-use, high-density, central urban area. So I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of this amendment.
Thank you. Let's remember Hunt?
Thank you. I, I am also in support of the motion in committee. I, I was in support of this part of the agenda bill, the part regarding storage units. I think that, as Councilmember Ray articulated, storage units are not, they're not a pedestrian-oriented land use. And so I think if we have a vision for the future to be walkable, then limiting them makes good sense to me, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Additional comments? I have Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Ramos.
All right. Thank, thank you. Good discussion, interesting discussion. I'm struck with, you know, how much space is actually in the central area and the actual footprint for any given building, and that if those national figures do continue to hold, and then there is, is demand, having that service in proximity where people are living, I don't see anything wrong with that. I don't, I don't, I don't also have a problem with, I heard the whole idea of vibrancy and walkability. You know, if we're going to get the people and the jobs, and we've created the, the land use zoning, we've created the development and design standards, including the architecture and urban design, we've got quite a pile of regulations to help us get what we want. I'm, if, if, if the market is saying that we also need, you know, the people who live there also need this type of service, then I would consider it an overreach on our part to deny the delivery of that service, you know, where it's, where it's needed. So I'm not going to support this, this bill tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. I have two left, I think. Councilmember Ramos and then Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
Yes. So previously, discussions have, if we're changing zoning or coding, that there is often consequences with that that we are liable for if we take something and say, you can no longer use it for this purpose. So my question to you is that, it seems like that discussion hasn't happened at all in this case, when you say, okay, we're, we're disallowing use of land for what you may have desired to do, and we've had no discussion of what those consequences could be. So that's, you understand my question?
Just a clarification, legal or legal and other consequences?
Legal and other. So basically, yeah, if you're denying, if someone, someone had been in the planning stages of a unit in, in these areas that are now disallowed, then what would those legal consequences be?
So I'm not going to address the legal consequences, but I'll address the land use one. So, so what the market would tell you is, if there's demand in our community for storage, and we're going to take, we're going to create a donut hole, basically, that doesn't allow it, it's going to go somewhere else. So the somewhere else, right now, without doing an in-depth land use analysis, would be Issaquah Highlands Talus and the service area that we're taking out of Central Issaquah. So those would be the areas that would potentially be ripe for getting, attracting a new storage facility.
For the legal part, we'll have our attorney answer.
So with respect to any existing business and existing facility, obviously, they are a legal non-conforming use, so they would be continued to be allowed to continue. For anyone who has filed a building permit application for such a facility, they would be vested and would have the right to build such a facility and do that use, the use would be legally non-conforming. For anybody who is simply planning but has not yet filed a building permit application, the new zoning ordinances would, would trump that, and they would not be allowed to proceed forward. You would have to have filed a building permit in order to vest your rights to a particular use in order to be allowed to do it. And the city always retains the right to change its zoning regulations, and unless you've impinged upon a vested right or a, or prohibited a use, which you can't do because it's legally non-conforming, there are no real legal consequences in terms of damages or anything like that that a property owner can bring at you.
Does that help?
Yes, I totally understand what you said. I'm doing, it seems like other places, it seems like that's not the, a clear-cut answer when we've talked about that.
Yeah, I think he's saying it's within your purview to do it without legal ramifications. If that makes sense. Okay. Do you have additional?
I understand what you said. It just seems like we've had that discussion differently and on other topics. So I'm okay.
I need, is it okay if I go to Councilmember, Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
Just a follow-up to.
A follow-up? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I think that we have had conversations, similar conversations, there's a difference between zoning and land use. And, and so, you may.
That may add to the confusion.
The conversations, that there would be different types of consequences.
Thank you.
Potential consequences.
Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the first thing that I wanted to talk about was just the fact that I'm really glad that this came down off the consent calendar. I, this is a, turned into a little bit of, it's, it's complicated, and there's two pieces to it, and so it's something that I'm, I'm happy that we are talking about as a whole council. So I was glad to see that that came down off of consent. I, this is just one of those agenda bills that I really can see both, both sides. I have the same concerns that Council President Marts has in terms of prescribing where things can go within the city, but I think when I look at the hotel issue, bringing that back to no restriction makes sense to me. But when I think about the Central Issaquah plan and the vision for that plan, then it really does take me down the pathway to, to be able to support that going in, still providing places for the storage units to go, but outside of that core. So I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Everyone has spoken once. Would anybody like additional discussion time, or are we ready for the vote?
Yeah. Say a little more. This is, this is a tough balance here, because, and I've heard the story of some towns up north of Seattle, where one, one town basically said no storage units, and the next town just got new applications for like eight storage units all at once, because they have to go somewhere. They are a money-making business, and it seems like people have a lot of stuff to store. I'm not sure why, but that's the way it is. Yeah. So it's interesting, but I do think that there can be a better use of, of some land in some places and some other things than others. So I'm going to wait till the last second here.
That's what I was thinking. Any other comments, or should we go to the vote? It was moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2837, amending table 4.3B of the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards to, to limit self-storage units to the mixed-use zoning district, strike all, and this is editorial, right? Or no? This is permitted, to strike all references in the ordinance other than self-storage. Correct? Thank you. Is that clear, or do you need me to read it again?
That's good.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hans? Thank you. Those opposed?
No.
The motion is approved, five in favor with Marts and Winterstein opposed. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember?
Goodman.
Goodman?
So I have a, a second motion that I would like to make, and it has to do with revisiting the land use tables in, in Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards. And the reason I'm going to make this motion is because I've been on the council since the time that we were deliberating the Central Issaquah plan, and the council has never, and I was also on Land and Shore at the time, council has never discussed, that I can ever recall, the land use, the land use table. And I did ask Keith about that earlier, and he thinks my recollection is correct. So now that we've had the Central Issaquah plan in place for several years, and we- and we have seen unintended consequences, and went into a moratorium so that we could deal with some issues, and we're about ready to hopefully come out of the moratorium, I think it's probably time for the administration to take a look at that Table 4.3B and evaluate whether any additional changes are needed based on what we've learned so far. So that's why I'm going to make the motion. I would move to direct the administration to reevaluate, after the moratorium is lifted, to reevaluate Table 4.3B of the Central Isaguac Development and Design Standards and make recommendations to the City Council about whether changes are needed.
Is there a second?
Second?
Could you hand me the motion, Councilmember Goodman? Thank you.
So again, it's-
Let me just-
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. It's been moved and seconded to move to direct the administration to reevaluate Table 4.3B of the Central Isaguac Development and Design Standards and make recommendations to the City Council about whether changes are needed after the mor-, oh, after the moratorium is lifted, belongs at the beginning of it. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
I just wanted to reiterate that it doesn't direct any specific changes to be made. It doesn't try to point to anything that needed to be changed. I just think it's time, once we have the moratorium lifted, like I said, with everything that we've learned, just take a, you know, with a focused eye, look at that table and see if there's anything that we might think about changing. And then come back to the council and let us know, and then we can have another discussion.
Council President Martz?
So I appreciate the idea behind this. My concern is that we have, as a council, shown a sensitivity to how much the administration has on its plate in 2018. And I would like to understand, before considering supporting this motion, what the impact of this would be in the context of, you know, we decided to not move to the two-year finance this year because it was just, you know, we wanted to take things off the plate that were not essential so that we'd keep the essential work done. And I would like to have a better confidence about whether the administration feels like this would be something that would be relatively easy to accommodate.
So we can ask staff that question, but I can also, if it's okay, Council President Martz, see if anybody else has questions of staff, and we can bundle them together. Are there any other questions for staff about this motion besides the two that are on, one having to do with time, timing of this, and the other is the impact on the work plan? Any other questions?
Can we look at the table for just a minute? Do you have it, Keith?
The table, yes. I can find it. Slowly, apparently.
Page 196 of the packet, but that won't help you.
There we go. I'm working.
I mean, I just pulled it up. It's a fairly extensive, extensive table. And I worry a little bit about, I shouldn't say that. Keith, what's the likelihood, if you went through it, that we would create more problems than we solve? I mean, I worry about the unintended consequences of kind of moving things around.
So, you know, so the table, as y'all can see, is multi-pages. The way that it works is it lists particular uses and then says where they're permitted within each zone. You know, if we were going through it with a specific lens, like, for example, we talked about storage being a non-vibrant use. If we, I think if we had criteria to go through it with, you know, I'd want to have edges to the box, right? And then that would go to PPC. We'd have a conversation. There'd be a public process associated with that, and then we'd come back with any proposed code amendments. You know, it's, it could be manageable. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, because we haven't gotten into it yet, what that would look like. But, you know, my guess is most of these uses are going to not fall off the plate. But I don't know how many might work their way into that, you know, these are the ones that are for a conversation. I mean, the first step would be to shrink down all these uses into the ones that we think meet whatever criteria it is we think we're wanting to judge them against.
So Keith, could you also go to Council President Martz's questions about timing and whether or not it's, even without having edges on the box, adding to the work plan for this year?
My boss is glaring at me. You know, I have a hard time saying no, so I'm going to defer to my boss, who might have a better comprehension of my work plan than I do.
Thanks, Emily.
I certainly would love a little bit of time to contemplate this outside of this meeting before we are able to respond in a thoughtful way. I have similar concerns about what criteria is being applied, and we haven't had a conversation around that. So it's very hard to decide what the scope of work will look like and how much time and effort that will entail. I think also I can foresee a need for a lot of data collection in order to back up any recommendations that we might make. So I would love to defer commenting on what it's going to take until we have a bit more conversation about what is desired, then I'd know how to apply the right staffing resources to get you what you want.
Let me ask a question, both of staff and of Councilmember Goodman. So you did not include an actual deadline on here. You just said after the moratorium. And would it be possible for the council to vote on this motion today without a specific timeline, but then to have it referred to a work session this year where just the discussion on scoping could happen? Is that a possibility of what could come out of this evening? Or? Daisy? Councilmember Goodman?
Just a procedural question. Is it possible to, I'm looking at Jim, is it possible to table motions, like to the next meeting? And so there could be, maybe a response before? So, for example, I'm thinking of, when I think about this, I think of the areas in Central Isaguac where we have talked about vibrancy, and we've talked about Mall Street. We've got a new, you know, the vertical mixed use area. We've got all along Gilman. We're talking about visioning, you know, Gilman. And, you know, just, for example, looking through that lens to see, if you think about Gilman, you could go down the list pretty easily and go, there either is and there isn't something that you think, wow, that shouldn't be on Gilman. And so I was thinking of that kind of a pass-through. And so, and I realize that administration and Keith hasn't had an opportunity to think about how you might do this in a manageable way, and I appreciate the fact that you haven't. So the reason I'm asking is whether there's an opportunity, whether you can table a motion and come back to the next meeting or something.
I think tabling usually is to just place something on the table, and it takes a motion to bring it back off the table. If you, the appropriate subsidiary motion here would be a motion to postpone the motion until the next meeting. But that is proper. That's a proper subsidiary motion.
Is it a move and a second to postpone?
Yes.
Does it have to be the originator, or can it be somebody?
It can be anyone.
Move to postpone?
I would move to postpone to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Many seconds. Okay, but it's been moved and seconded to postpone the motion for consideration at the next council meeting? On favor? Any discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, just one point. It's an interesting topic, and we, it is probably time that we all became a little bit more familiar, especially those of us on Land and Shore. We also have our, and perhaps on the verge of coming out of the moratorium, and we've added quite a bit, I mean, to the regulations on what can happen and what must happen and what cannot happen, and how it can happen, and how it should look, and what color it should be, and whether it should have lighting and covering and all these type of things. We've done actually quite a bit. And I think the idea of allowing the ramifications of all of these new regulations to take hold and see, give that some time, it would be appropriate. And whether or not further changes to allow land uses within, specific land uses within specific zones, I think is a good discussion, but for another day. I know this is about tabling it, but I just think that when it comes to all the rest of our work plan and all the other things we have to do, and the fact that we're just coming out of a moratorium, I don't see the urgency on this, though I do think it's a good exercise.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
So I just want to respond to Councilmember Winterstein's comment about urgency, and I appreciate that, and I know we've got a lot of changes coming out of the moratorium. And I just want to go back to when we adopted the Central Isaguac Plan. And again, there was the discussion about whether we should require vertical mixed use. And that didn't get any traction, and I talked about it for a long time. And the very first, the very first application we got within a week or two of passing the Central Isaguac Plan was the apartments. And the city said, well, we'd love vertical mixed use. And they said, well, then you should have required it. So I guess my message is that we need to be deliberate, and we need to be careful about what we allow and don't allow. And that's the reason for looking at the table with everything that we've learned to see if there is something that presents itself as a potential unintended consequence. And the reason that I consider it to be fairly urgent is because those unintended consequences can happen anytime, within a week after the moratorium's lifted. So I actually do consider it a fairly urgent task that should be done fairly soon, not next week, but not in two years, and not waiting for many, many, many more projects or an unintended consequence to happen. I just think we have to be very careful, we have to be very deliberate. We have to make good on the promise that we made to our community to develop thoughtfully, and I actually do think it's fairly urgent. But I'm, we'll be supporting, obviously, the postponing it, and we'll be anxious to hear the response on what we might be able to do, and hopefully that will get support. Thanks.
Council President Martz?
So I guess the thing I want to say about this is that we have a lot of things that are coming into effect as we exit the moratorium. And I personally, as one of seven, am getting a diminished appetite for ongoing regulatory activity. I think that whatever fixes we wanted to have, critical things we identified in the moratorium and ate up, and seven down, and the eighth we're about to hit. And so I understand that we should make sure that this table reflects the work that we've done over the last couple of years, and I think that's a good activity. But I also think that I personally want to start seeing us slowing down on what we tell landowners they can and can't do with their property, because I think there's been a lot of that over the course of this moratorium. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments before we take a vote? All those in favor of postponing consideration of this motion to the June 4th council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda this evening is AB 7344. We've allotted five minutes for the discussion of the Central Isaguac District Visions. This is a moratorium work item, and I am kidding. We have not put a time limit on it. This is the last of the moratorium work items. This Agenda Bill was previously before council in December when it was remanded to the Planning Policy Commission for additional work as recommended by the Council Land and Shore Committee. The Planning Policy Commission forwarded a revised district vision proposal to council in March. The Land and Shore Committee has been reviewing the revised proposal at their April and May committee meetings. I'd like to invite Keith Niven to stay at the podium, Economic and Development Services Director, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the sixth and final moratorium work item, Agenda Bill 7344, Central Isaguac Visions. I'm going to take you back to the genesis of the moratorium, which was a presentation that staff made before the city council at a work session. And we provided some information to the council. And what you see here is some of those pieces of information that were provided. As you can see, at the time, we had 936 residential units in the pipeline. That was Atlas and Gateway and Vale and Inniswood, those projects that we all kind of know today. And zero of those 936 units were going to be affordable. And the council kind of said, how can that be? Our comprehensive plan says we're supposed to be getting affordable housing. And so we talked about inclusionary housing. We talked about what was in the Central Isaguac Plan at that time. We also kind of went through the visions, and we talked about, we used Western Gateway as an example since it had had a lot of permitting happening. And we looked at whether or not we were getting what the visions described. And the answer was kind of not really. And, you know, we did, this was called the chicklet chart. And, you know, what this was, was basically going through the different topics and talking about the projects that were in. And you can see the green indicated we were getting what we wanted, and the red was showing that we weren't. And as you can see by the Xs over here on the side, there were a number of things that were included in the moratorium that specifically related to this chart and the things that we were not getting that we were expecting to get. And right now, tonight, we're going to talk about visions, which is the green star over on the left. So visions. So Vision for a Subarea Plan presents a shared image of what the community wants the area to become over the next 20 years. And the questions were, this is kind of what we were trying to do, was rewrite the visions for each district to be clear and predictable. We wanted to rewrite the visions to make them more than just aspirational suggestions. Some of the comments that came out of those moratorium conversations with the council was, we're wanting things to happen, we're encouraging things, but we're not making things happen. In that wiggle room, we're losing what we want. And the third item was ensure the visions can be used with the codes and the policies of the subarea plan to give us a more predictable future. So that was kind of, that was our guidepost. And here are the changes. So basically, what we did is we took some land out of Central Isaguac. When we looked at Old Route 10, which is Bohm's and Triple X, and when we looked at the service neighborhood, which was the area over by the Public Works Operations Shop, those really didn't feel like Central Isaguac. And so as we talked this through, we said, you know what? Let's just take those areas out. And so we also condensed the 10 districts into five neighborhoods. And we looked at a map earlier tonight of what those five neighborhoods look like. The existing Central Isaguac Plan has a definition for the Green Necklace. It also has some policies for the Green Necklace, but what we heard is there really wasn't a good visual of what the Green Necklace was. And one of the things through the drafting of the Park Strategic Plan was they spent some time actually crafting a subset of that plan, which they called the Green Necklace. And so one of the things that we did is brought in an image to help us with that. The old visions, the old description of the neighborhood or the districts basically had a vision statement, listed out primary uses, key environmental factors, and mobility and connectivity. What's being proposed in the current version is what we call developer obligations, city implementing actions, and then what would be measures of success. So structurally, it's completely a redo. So we saw, you know, I think, this is my opinion, hopefully Land and Shore would resonate this. We saw it a reasonable approach. One of the things that was asked of staff during the Land and Shore review was take a look at Atlas. You know, take a look at a project that existed and apply the proposed developer obligations to that to really see, you know, what would this mean? How much change would actually be warranted, and would that be reasonable? You know, we spent most of our time really working on the developer obligations because as their name implies, they would be obligations. They would be required, and there's two code amendments that go along with the visions that actually make them a required part as applicable. as applicable. Item number two, clear and required. Item number three, you know what, we could have spent another five years talking about visions, and we probably would continue to polish this. So, there might be some things we might have missed, and I'll be the first one to admit that. But we went through an awful lot of Planning Policy Commission meetings, we went through an awful lot of Land and Shore meetings, an awful lot of commissioners, council committee members, public, and we tried to get as many Central Issaquah Task Force members back together as possible to try and give, and DC, we invited DC, thanks Mel, to kind of give us their input so that we could get as good a product as we could. But, you know, even having said all of that, there's at least four things that I wanted to identify to the council as a whole that we either didn't have consensus on, or that we felt like we needed some more work to unpack. The first one is job loss. One of the proposals that came out of PPC was that for three of the neighborhoods, Eastlake, Gilman, and Pickering, that there really should be no job loss, no removing retail or office space to just put solely residential back in its place. And even though that didn't come out of committee with a majority recommendation, it came out with a split recommendation. And some of the concerns are about the loss of jobs, you know, we, this is our core of our city, this is where, and we seem to be very prone to getting more residential units. And so, the concern that kind of was woven through all of the conversations was, should there be something in the developer obligations about employees or square footage? And so, that one, I'm just kind of putting it on the shelf for now. Historic preservation, we talked about, this one came about because of Gilman Village specifically, and, you know, Gilman Village is a very iconic part of our city, and there's nothing that would preserve that today. And we had drafted actually some language about preserving Gilman Village, and I think, rightly so, the committee thought, you know what, that seems very selective. You know, if we're going to have a bigger conversation about Gilman Village and other historic properties in our city, then let's do that, and maybe this isn't the tool to try and somehow put a lock and key on Gilman Village. Wayfinding signs, there was a lot of talk about how wayfinding signs are really something that helps neighborhoods kind of click, and we have so many trails wandering through our city that we really need to kind of progress. That evolution or that development of a wayfinding plan for the city, it's something that we don't have yet, but there's a number of things that point to, you know, participation in wayfinding signs. And then the last one, and this one was one that, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not sure we got completely solved, and it's, how do you, how do you, so, we require private projects to provide gathering spaces, and whether those gathering spaces feel open to the public, or feel like you're trespassing if you happen to walk through them, I'm not sure we solved that puzzle, but that was something that we talked about quite a bit. And, you know, that, I think what I heard was, there was a request, at least coming out of the committee, that we should spend some more time thinking about those, the public access to privately provided gathering spaces. So, that's a short presentation tonight, but I am here to answer questions that you might have.
Not sure there's any questions.
Awesome.
Okay, we have questions. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keith, number four up there, job loss, I didn't, it's not, it's not part of what's proposed in front of us this evening, is it?
It is not part of what's proposed. It was a minority recommendation coming out of committee.
Okay, so it's not currently, I didn't see it in there, so I.
It got struck out of the last draft.
Okay, and then historic preservation, actually, I thought the, you just said lock and key, but I remember that as just some type of signage acknowledging what had been here previously. It wasn't to deny, so.
We kind of, we kind of moved back and forth between something that would require them to have a conversation with the city, to just getting a plaque, to requiring some reuse of some of the buildings.
So, that's not in there, wayfinding, but you do have a lot of wayfinding in there.
We do.
And, and I'll add too, it was actually, came out of the Roger Brooks Study from 2014, and LTAC has recommended that, along with the branding, actually, LTAC has some reserves to help move that forward as a citywide effort. And I'll speak a little bit more to that, but just for everybody's benefit, when we, I think we're going to talk more about these developer obligations that's in there, and I think you have a caveat in there as well, once the city has a plan.
Yes.
And I think that's very critical thing to understand, is that there needs to be, there needs to be a design and a plan before you start building that out, at least that's, that has been the LTAC and the Roger Brooks recommendation for a while. Thank you.
Yes.
Questions? Councilmember Ray.
But can we talk about historical preservation, and I'm, you certainly piqued my interest with Gilman Village? I mean, I can't imagine that we would be okay with Gilman Village being raised to put up an apartment building, but based on what I thought I heard you say, that's a possible outcome?
Absolutely.
So, can you tell me about kind of what we're thinking with historical preservation, and what that would look like, and how that would be good for Gilman Village, if it would?
Councilmember Ray, so it's not in the package tonight, so I think what Keith was putting up there was a list of issues that could be addressed, that are open. So, I don't believe you have a recommendation this evening on anything to do with historical preservation.
I don't. I think, I think what we were suggesting is, there needs to be a work item. If the council, the council has concern about that, then we need to put together a work plan item to address, to at least actively address it, because right now, we're not.
So, it's not addressed in the current replacement, or the regulations that we're looking at?
Not, not the version that's up for motion this evening. It was, there was an item in the Confluence Neighborhood for Gilman Village, we struck it out because of concern that it seemed like we were cherry picking on one project. So.
So, let me, let me ask this really directly.
Sure.
So, if we adopt the ordinance that, in front of us, or the, yeah, ordinance that's in front of us, and I can go in tomorrow and mow down Gilman Village and put up stacked flats?
Yes, as currently drafted.
Council President Mertz.
So, I want to speak to this because I was one of the people that discussed it in committee. Here's where my concern was at. I think the city should have, if, if we think that Gilman Village rises to the level of something that we want to take special consideration of before we let stacked flats go up, I think that there's a number of properties in the city we should do that for. I think that in retrospect, I'm not sure that we took proper historical context into account when we disposed of properties, for instance, with Confluence Park, and I think that the city has a number of properties that deserve potential consideration around, you know, special activities towards trying to, you know, what we want to do with it. And we, as a council, did move forward a year, year and a half ago, when we said that, I believe that when we were going to dispense with properties of ours, that we would make sure that they had been evaluated for historical significance. We added that as a council. And so, I would like to see a comprehensive historical property consideration in this city. And so, what I objected to was just picking, cherry picking Gilman Village in particular, and saying that's worthy of consideration, and that we don't have other properties in the same set of lands that are also worth consideration.
Additional questions? Deputy Council President Batiste, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
I guess, I guess I just had a follow-up question about when we're talking about the historic preservation and Gilman Village, if we, if we would need to look at it as both sides of the coin in terms of, could we have something that talked about Gilman Village within the vision, and still go forward and do an overview of historic preservation throughout the city in the future? And was that, was that part of the, was that part of the conversation?
I'm checking, checking what we wrote. So, so right now, so the way that the, so, we stripped it out of a developer obligation, but right now, the way that the, kind of the introduction to Confluence Neighborhood, there is a section called, there's, we created objectives, and one is distinctive, which is in each neighborhood. And for, for Confluence, bullet number two, and this is on page 419 of 4U2, Gilman Village remains a local and regional destination. So, we have that as an aspirational goal for Confluence. We just took out the developer obligation that they can't redevelop their property. So, right now, we have it listed as an aspirational goal for the neighborhood, but there's no teeth in, in the actual developer obligations now, because of the conversation that Council President Mertz alluded to earlier. So, did that help?
I think, I think so. I'm still a little stuck on whether there would be the opportunity to keep the teeth and the developer obligation in regard to Gilman Village, and still go forward with a future overview of historic preservation throughout the rest of the city. So, to kind of break, I'm, I guess I'm asking if there was discussion around breaking that apart that way. It sounds like it was on the table, and then it came back off the table, and I'm just trying to understand.
It was on the table and came back off the table.
Thank you.
So, I've noted that down as maybe something we could get all the council members to comment on at some point. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I, so I think we should go back to what was originally proposed in a developer obligation was something about requiring there be some sort of historic link maintained regarding Gilman Village, which is very ambiguous, and nobody on the committee understood what that meant. And so, Keith agreed to rework that, and back at the last commit, last week, and it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was something in there, a change to requiring the property owner to have a conversation with the city before there was any redevelopment, which of course has no teeth. The conversation is, we don't want you to put stacked flats in, and the property owner says, well, that's too bad. And so, that's when we turned to historic preservation and a larger conversation. The other thing that came out that I think is really important is, there's been no conversation with the owner of Gilman Village about what's in the developer, what was in the developer obligations. And so, my opinion with that was, picking out one property and without any kind of a conversation with that property owner about the historical significance, and trying to create some sort of obligations, without even a conversation, I thought was inappropriate.
So, there's also, there's also, one of the city implementing actions within Confluence, it's bullet number two, is work with the property owner to preserve the character of Gilman Village. So, we have, we have something that we tasked ourselves with in terms of this neighborhood and the success for this neighborhood. So, and then, as a measure of success, we list it as preserved, is one of the measures of success for this neighborhood. So, so the thing that's missing is, is how to, how to get there. I think we're clear on what we want to achieve, but we kind of took out any obligation of the developer at this time, I think, for the reasons that you heard, you know, we really have not spent that much, or any time, talking to the property owner about whether this is going to be a big lift, or something that'll be reasonable to get to. Sorry, I'm scrolling through like 8,000 pages, but it's all listed. So, this is, it's under the distinctive column on, for the Confluence Neighborhood.
Okay, any more questions? No? Checking. Nope. Do you have a question, Paul?
I do, but this is a big topic, and we, and I do have a question about Keith's presentation, if I can just get to that. Keith, could you go back to your changes slide?
Yes.
It was titled Changes, it was two or three from the end. Maybe just, yeah, one right there.
Come on.
So, that's, this is the first time I've seen that, I don't know if you showed it at committee, I hadn't seen that before, but I found that kind of interesting, because I think you shortchanged the proposed a little bit, because the, in, under existing, the last line, the last row in your table, you say, it has visions, and primary uses, and key environmental factors, and mobility and connectivity. Then you just, and then you say in the new one, you're proposing developer obligations, and all, and the rest, you can read that. But in fact, there's a lot more in there, right? In the, in the existing vision for each of the five neighborhoods, we have a statement about what's there today, what we see it as the future, and then categorically, we have these bulleted lists about livability, distinctiveness, connected and sustainable. And those are pretty significant, and they're beyond what were in the original visions. So, it's not just what, it's not just these developer obligations.
Thank you, yes. So, so these, I consider this the setup. So, each neighborhood has kind of a description of what it looks like today, what it is today, the future, where we want it to go, and then, as Councilmember Winterstein mentioned, you know, each of the four goals are kind of bulleted underneath it, as far as aspirational endpoints. And then we get into, then how do you get there? The developer obligations, the city implementing actions, and then what would be measures for success. So, so really, you know, all of this is, this, so one of the things, the reason why this moratorium work item took a year and a half, is because we blew up what was in the plan, and basically kind of started over again. And, and I think the amount of detail that's here is a lot more specific to each area, whereas I think the prior language was very generic and very broad-based. So, so in terms of one of, if we go back to those goals I mentioned at the beginning of the PowerPoint, you know, make it more predictable. I think that by providing clearer vision for each neighborhood, I think we've done that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If there's no questions, I'd like to get a motion. Question or motion?
Motion.
Motion.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2838. Relating to Central Issaquah, amending sections 1.1. C and 1.1. D. 2 of the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, and adopting by reference several amendments to the Central Issaquah Plan, a subarea plan within Issaquah's comprehensive plan, by updating the district visions, changing district boundaries, and changing boundaries of Central Issaquah.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, is there any council discussion? Seeing none? Excuse you guys. Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate all the time and effort that so many people put into bringing it to this point, nonetheless than Mr. Niven himself. Thank you, Keith, to you and all the shepherding that you've done, and I think it really took a difficult challenge. We kind of punted on this one, we focused on the other ones, and you, and early on, during the moratorium, you said, let's, and, and we're going to do this other thing for the visions, and, because it was maybe less clear. And I too share the desire for the central area and all of Issaquah to retain what makes us special, and as we grow and evolve within a region that's experiencing high growth. It's very interesting, there's a sentence in the current plan that I wanted to highlight, it's on page nine of the current plan, now, we're actually going to strike it out. It gets replaced by some of this, which is unfortunate. It's, and, and it's in the policy balance section that's being replaced, and it says, "The district visions are a glimpse of the area's future. The visions are implemented through zoning, development and design standards, as well as maps of park, trail, and circulation improvements." So, that's, that's, that's part of what's in there now, and, so when we, but, but that language in there, you go up one more page, where you're right at the top, it says, this, the content on your page and the next one is going to replace that, which is really unfortunate. I think that that's a. I think that's a really good statement, that the visions are implemented through zoning, perhaps also land use, development and design standards, as well as maps of the park, trail, and circulation improvements. And we enacted the moratorium because we weren't getting what we envisioned. And this was because we didn't have the regulations in place to assure we achieved the vision. And so, real quickly, I want to take a look at what we've done since the moratorium to remedy the shortcomings of the regulations, right? For in zoning, we added vertical mixed use. That is a... That's an overlay. Somebody... Certain parcels of land, if you're going to develop them, guess what? You're going to develop them as vertical mixed use. That was a very important change that we made. Recently, we added inclusionary zoning, which requires affordable housing throughout most of the central area. I want to note that in your assessment of Atlas, that you just looked at developer obligations. And you really... You didn't... I didn't see in the document... I haven't had a chance to watch the committee meeting as well. If it was discussed, I apologize. But didn't mention the affordable housing. But affordable housing would have been part of Atlas. And that was handled through our inclusionary zoning change. Nothing about, "We're considering this evening." And then, further in regard to affordable housing, we created a trial run for the multifamily tax exemption. And that'll be something... It's not really zoning, but it's a way to get some more affordable housing, which was an important part of the whole moratorium. And now, even tonight, the council took a land use action that removed where self-storage units can be located. So, in terms of what that original statement says, the visions are implemented through zoning, we've done quite a bit and even more this evening with an additional land use one. That statement goes on to say, "Development and design standards." So, we've done quite a bit. We've added an entire architecture and urban design. They originally were two different items in the moratorium. They are combined into one. This is hundreds of pages long. And establishes protocol and many specifications, including a color palette. And you know how I feel about a color palette. And so, that's quite a bit. There's a finite type of designs that can be built based upon an update we made to these development and design standards. And I also noted in the assessment of Atlas that those weren't addressed either. I didn't see, okay, what would the new architecture and urban design standards have done to changed Atlas? And I think that would be significantly different. The roofline would be different, for sure. Colors would be different. Architecture would be significantly different as well. And I want to point that out because so much, so often, Atlas is pointed out or is mentioned as, "We didn't get what we wanted." And yet, even before any action tonight, things we've already done with inclusionary zonings and architectural and urban design regulations that we've added would have resulted in something significantly different, just right there. And then, as far as the last part of that that we're about to replace, that language that says, "As well as maps of park, trail, and circulation improvements." And we have those. We do have the street grid. And the green necklace has evolved significantly. I think the entrance that you are suggesting that we've reviewed that will be added this evening, just a reference. And then, the more details in the Park Strategic Plan are all pretty significant. That's a pretty significant change as well. So, even before, you know, these developer obligations, the actions we've already taken would have... Well, if it had been in place before the moratorium, there'd be a significantly different outcome than we already have today. And I do... I think it's very important that we go make sure that we're... Remind ourselves about what the language in the moratorium says. I know you had some language up there this evening, but very specifically, in the ordinance that established the moratorium, it says, "We should consider whether the vision for some of the districts, parenthetical neighborhoods, may need to be modified based upon development." And I really liked what you said earlier in response to my question, that the vision part of what's here, separate from the developer obligations, is actually significantly more than what we had before. And I would say, from my own interpretation, when I voted in favor of the moratorium, when we said we... This line that says, "Consider whether visions may need to be modified," I think what you showed earlier, again, prior to the developer obligations, all those vision statements for each neighborhood, including the bulleted lists about their livability, distinctiveness, connectedness, sustainability, those are all very significant. And I think, per the intent, as far as I'm concerned, those meet the intent of that component of the moratorium language as far as considering updating the visions. So, I go through all of this because I think that we're going a step too far with our developer obligations. And Keith, you've heard me say that before. You know that I feel, and I've said this publicly from the dais before as well, that we had an understanding about visions. And I think we've got that. And the developer obligations, many of which, I think, maybe should be formal, considered as Central Issaquah Development and Design Standard updates as opposed to this other extension to visions. And so, I point all that out, like I said earlier in the comments, about the self-storage units. And I've been trying to iterate here. We have made significant changes. If you're listening to this and you're thinking... And previously, you thought, you know, Atlas was the thing. It just became a shape and color and a feel that said something needed to be done. We don't even have to take any action tonight. And we've already prevented the next app. If those are... If that's really what your concern is. Those are very, very significant. I think these vision updates are very significant as well. And it would be my preference that we go forward and adopt these visions, including all the sections, today, future, livable, connected, all of those, and go forward with adopting those, but hold off on the developer obligations part of this.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Councilmember Ramos, Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
So, the question for me is, as you stated in one of the lines up there, was, "The purpose of the vision, vision should be used with codes and policies to make it happen." And in our discussions that you and I have had previously to this, I felt that oftentimes, we talked about things and you said you didn't have the things to make it happen. So, just went over a whole bunch of things that have happened. The test for me is, do you think you have everything you need at this point in time?
So, one of the things... I'm going to answer this a little bit differently, and then, I can go back if you want me to actually answer that way. So, one of the things that we did at Land and Shore, one of the questions that was asked was, "Are the developer obligations duplicative to other things that are in the code or recently adopted through the moratorium work items?" And I went through and I read them and judged them against code. And there was a little bit of overlap, but my sense was it was okay to have a little bit of overlap because sometimes saying something twice is that much clearer. So, my take on it, these are different. These are a new tool. These aren't a second hammer. These are, you know, these are a screwdriver and a hammer. So, this is a new tool for us, for our toolbox. And it will get us closer to, I think, what everybody expects we should be getting within Central. So, I think this gets us even further towards the goal line. Is this everything? Don't know yet. I think what's going to happen is we're going to have to get a couple of projects under our belt. And then, we're going to have to sit down with all of these tools again and see which ones are working and which ones aren't. Thank you.
Did you also want to make some comments, too? Or do you have another question? Hold for now. Okay. So, I think I had Goodman, followed by Hunt.
I actually do have a question. The... Adopting this would... What would be the... What needs to happen to lift the moratorium? When would that be? And then, when would this ordinance take effect?
So, my understanding... I'll look to the city attorney with my one good eye. I believe that, based on the ordinance, the moratorium ordinance, that when the final work item is completed, that the moratorium is lifted. Technically, this code amendment doesn't go into effect because what we're doing is we're amending code, but we're also removing a number of properties from Central Issaquah by adopting this. And so, there's a 90-day kind of effective date from the date of publishing. So, that puts us into like August. So, right now, the moratorium would be lifted. But this wouldn't ultimately be into effect, I think, until August. And I'll look to Jim for any clarifications he might want to offer. Been like Saturday.
And I think, depending on Jim's interpretation, I think the question is, what would happen in those 90 days?
So, my sense would be nothing. So, in those 90 days, what happens is, property owners or developers would start to then put together their plans for coming in. The first step is to schedule a pre-application meeting with Development Services. Right now, I believe we're two months out just because of staff availability and things that are happening in the villages. They are still called the villages. And so, you know, so my sense is we might be able to sit down with a property owner or two before August. And then, you know, somebody would come in with their application. So, if there's a concern about a gap before it's enacted, just our backlog right now within Development Services, it's not a concern of mine.
I think that's part of it. I think what you might want to find... I think the answer we might want to give is not whether or not we have the capacity to do it, but whether or not projects that come through would be processed under old code or new code. I think that was the...
So, as you heard from the city attorney earlier, I think it was on this topic. It might have been on the hotels. You don't vest till building permit. And nobody would be able to get to a point of a building permit in 90 days. You just... You can't. It's not... It doesn't move that fast. So, even if you came in... Even if you could come in with an application, you know, quickly, you wouldn't get there in time. Plus, as Councilmember Winterstein mentioned, all those other things are already in force. This is just the last piece.
Jim, did you have some clarifying information?
Yes. The current moratorium ordinance provides that the moratorium runs until 11:59:59 PM on June 6, unless the council extends it or unless the council has passed all amendments that the council deems necessary to fulfill the goals of the moratorium. So, if you've passed all of the ordinances, the moratorium ends. But even if one could say that you still had some work to do, it would end June 6 in any event. But the passage of all of these ordinances, which you identified, including the Central Issaquah Visions Ordinance, which is the last piece, will lift the moratorium.
I mean, like midnight or immediately, or what? What does that mean?
Well, it says passage as opposed to effective date. So, I would say it's lifted as of when you pass the ordinance.
That's member Hunt.
Thank you. Firstly, I wanted to echo the thanks for everybody who's worked so hard on the visions. And I think that they do set really clear expectations in a lot of the text and will be a good tool in the future to help us achieve the vibrant future for Issaquah that we all want. So, thank you for all the hard work. And I have one sort of outstanding issue that I would like to talk about, which is the balance of employment. And that was brought up as something for future use. But I would like to propose a change, an amendment. So, the amendment would be to amend the proposed ordinance by adding the following developer obligation language to the Pickering, Gilman, and Eastlake Neighborhood Visions. And that is... The language is, "Ensure the amount of nonresidential square footage or nonresidential square footage based on ITE equivalents is not reduced during redevelopment."
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And it's not the language I have in front of me, though, Tisha.
Okay. And I can explain. Can I have it?
Sure. Can I... Can you pass that down to me? That's different. Which is allowed. Thank you. The motion is to amend the proposed ordinance by adding the following developer obligation language language to the Pickering, Gilman, and Eastlake Neighborhood Visions. Ensure the amount of non-residential square footage or...
Or non-residential square footage based on ITE...
Based on ITE equivalents. Thank you. Is not reduced during redevelopment. Okay, I'll try one more time. Ensure the amount of non-residential square footage or non-residential square footage based on ITE equivalents is not reduced during development, redevelopment. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Goodman, oh, sorry, but let, Councilmember Ray go first. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Hunt. Winterstein, Goodman, thanks.
Thanks. We discussed this language previously in, a similar developer obligation previously in committee. And the previous language referred to not losing job opportunities. For me, I couldn't really wrap my head around what that meant. I think that residential developments may provide job opportunities in a lot of ways. Residential can support nearby businesses, they can support other, they can support jobs in many ways. And so I think that job creation and job loss, job retention, those are all very complicated processes. For me, it was easier to think about this from the point of view of not wanting to lose the non-residential space and to have where there is currently non-residential uses to retain some of that for a balance of land uses so that we do have some jobs and that we do not completely lose jobs during the redevelopment process. I think that this will get us some mixed use, and that will lend itself to the neighborhood vibrancy potentially. It could also internalize some of the traffic and car trips. And I also just wanted to add that the ITE equivalents, that's, has to do with the fact that you might have a very large building that takes up a lot of space but only, only employs a few people. And so if you were to redevelop such a property, you wouldn't necessarily, to have the same number of jobs, you wouldn't necessarily have to come back with that same use. And that ITE equivalence is something that was discussed in committee and is just part of trying to avoid an unintended consequence with this developer obligation. So those are, those were my reasons for the amendment, and really, it comes down to wanting to achieve a balance of jobs with residential.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. I have Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
When, I think this was first raised during a PPC meeting when one of the commissioners said, hey, I heard Bellevue's doing this, we should look at this as well. There wasn't a lot of conversation at that point in that meeting, or much about it really afterwards. When we brought it here, it did come up here in this hall, maybe during a committee meeting, we asked staff, so what do you, what do you know about this? Has this been implemented elsewhere? What would be kind of the economic impact? Or can we make some type of assessment? Do these type of policies work? And basically, Keith, you and your staff said, we don't know anything about this yet. We've never, we've not studied it, and, and we really don't know if this would work as it may, as simply stated, as it sounds what its goal is, whether or not it would achieve that. And as, to my knowledge, there's really been no work on it since then. Is that true? So there's, and so this, I mean, I appreciate everything that Councilmember Hunt just said. And, and, but there was a key phrase in there. She said, "I think." We don't really, we don't know. There are certain cycles of how certain properties throughout their, over time, they're going to go through. There's going to be economic cycles, there's going to be different market demands. The truth is, we really don't know what the impact of this would be. And I urge caution, an abundance of caution, of saying, I want to put a restriction. We put a vertical, a mixed-use overlay on certain land, and we did that with full knowledge of an economic assessment that said, you know, we may still not get that for a while because the numbers aren't there. But we did it anyway, very aspirational. And I think that's a very significant regulation that we added. So, so the, so I think the, the lack of familiarity, you know, with the implications of such a regulation, the, and the fact that the vertical mixed use that we've already adopted, fully aware of the, that the economics may not work for vertical mixed use at this time. I think it would be unwise for us to proceed at this point with such a proposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. Councilmember Goodman?
So I think that we do know what some of the, what some of the outcome could be. First of all, we know that there is a huge demand for residential and particularly multifamily developments right now. And if we just let the market completely dictate what we get in redevelopment in the Central Issaquah area or development, then we will get what the market demands, and that is residential and not necessarily jobs right now. I totally agree that we need to be deliberate about how we balance, not how we balance, sorry, for, make sure we're, we're deliberate about how we're planning for the Central Issaquah area, and that if we want to have a job center and not just a residential center, then we're going to have to figure out some ways to preserve those opportunities because if we just develop residential, then we are not going to, we're going to be taking up prime space for, for employment centers. And as Councilmember Hunt said, alluded to traffic, this could be exactly the traffic that we're trying not to create, which is, everybody leaves, just like everybody's coming through here in the morning, everybody leaves and then everybody comes back at night. We're out of balance right now. The report that we've gotten on the Central Issaquah plan so far is housing, not jobs. So I, I do think we need language in here, and I support the amendment.
Council President Marts?
Four points. The first is that we went into this moratorium because we're only getting housing. So I want us to not only get housing, this will help assure it. Second point is, I want more living wage jobs. Third point is, I want more living wage jobs. And the fourth point is that I want more living wage jobs. Thank you.
Awesome. Council, Deputy Council President Patisse?
So I, I support this amendment. I had some pause and wanted to talk a little, a little bit about this in terms of, is this something that we can do and, and go forward with? But when we talk about the vision and, and what we're trying to accomplish, I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Marts just talked about in terms of being able to support that and being able to bring in employment centers and living wage jobs and not have it all focused on residential.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
So my thinking on this is very similar to my thinking when we were talking about storage units. And for us to recognize the vision that we have for Central Issaquah, it is going to be both commercial and it's going to be residential. And as much as I would like to think that the market will drive the, what we want, I'm pretty certain that the market will not drive what we want. And so we have to put up some bumpers to guide it into the right direction. So I think that this amendment makes a lot of sense.
Seeing Councilmember Winterstein?
Just want to add another point that, I'm sorry, I was looking through my GMPB data, and I haven't found it, so I can't cite the specific thing. There, of all of the regional growth centers, and now we, so Pickering and Gilman neighborhoods basically make up our regional growth center. We had conversations, and PSRC showed us some data. There's one regional growth center, regional growth center within the entire four-county area that is 100% jobs and zero dwelling units. You know which one that is?
Taquilla.
Issaquah.
Yeah, right.
100% jobs, zero dwelling units. Now, we know that's changing, there's something coming here. Balance suggests that we'll get a lot more, you know. PSRC recommendation is, there, there should be like at least 20/80. They only expect any thing to really be 50/50. But if you can get 20/80, either way, 20% housing, 80% jobs, 20% jobs, 80% housing, then that is, would be a good achievement. I, I don't know how this proposal is going to get us living wage jobs necessarily, what kind of jobs, it doesn't really kind of get to that point. So, but, so I think that's really important for us to know right now that, you know, we have like no housing. And housing affordability is very, in this area, especially in the regional growth center, which is not, not all the entire central area, but a significant portion of it, is that I think this will have, more likely have the effect of negating getting the housing and the affordable housing that we know that we need as well. I'm not in favor of this.
Any other discussion? So I will read the motion before the vote. Move to amend the proposed ordinance by adding the following developer obligations language to the Pickering, Gilman, and Eastlake Neighborhood Visions. Ensure the amount of non-residential square footage or non-residential square footage based on ITE equivalents is not reduced during redevelopment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes six to one with Winterstein opposed. I've kept track of a few of the issues before the motion was put on the table. Some of the things that still require discussion. There was a proposal to keep the developer obligation that was removed by committee dealing with Gilman Village property. There was a proposal from Councilmember Winterstein to consider striking out, not to strike out, part of the vision implementation language. And there were questions about the gap between the ending of the moratorium and the implementation or the effect, effective date of code. Continued deliberations, and we'll see what other questions come up. Council, Deputy Council President Patisse?
So I just wanted to echo, now that we're back to the, to the main motion, I just wanted to thank you and staff and the commissions and everyone who has worked on this very, very long project. And being able to see these visions come to light, something that we were talking about years ago on the Economic Development Commission, and, and seeing things more boiled down to where we started with all of the different districts, I think, makes a lot of sense. And there, there are so many good, good pieces to this and, and so much information. And, and being able to look at what the future vision is, I think, is incredibly important. So I just wanted to give that thanks to, to you and everyone who's worked on this. I do have one question and maybe another point that we wanted to talk about. Could you talk a little bit about the addition of the light rail, the Sound Transit map and stations? And just, I know that that came up as something that potentially needed to be added, and I just want to make sure I understand it being a part of this agenda bill.
So, try and answer that question. So right now, the Central Issaquah plan has a map in it with kind of a bunch of dots and something that looks like a slug. They call it the slug map. And because we didn't know where the, we still don't know where the Sound Transit station is going to be. As we talked about this with Planning Policy Commission, there was a lot of conversation about a desire for the location really to be somewhere in the vicinity of Pickering and Gilman and the new crossing of I-90. And so there's, there, there are conversations about creating a hub, kind of an activity hub around the station as it talks about it within the regional growth center and specifically within the Pickering and Gilman neighborhoods. The idea was that it, it made sense to be somewhere kind of in this vicinity and that both neighborhoods should really feed into that state, that future station location. You know, the unfortunate thing for us is, we're not going to know where that station is going to be till, I think, 2026, I think is the date, when they start doing that citing location study. We started having conversations with Sound Transit about trying to move that earlier and in the process, and I think that's still an outstanding question between the city and Sound Transit. So, so not knowing where it is yet, the visions have identified a desirable location in terms of being within the regional growth center and kind of shared between the two sides of the freeway. Whether that happens or not, you know, we're going to have to work on that with Sound Transit. And if ultimately it locates somewhere else, then we might have to modify our visions a little bit.
So, could I put it in this way, that these are some ideas to consider in the future?
Yes.
Okay. I do remember this, a similar map coming before Land and Shore a few years ago, and discussion around, this is, this is a really big topic, it's going to need a lot of conversation. So I just wanted to point that out in terms of this being part of the agenda bill.
Thank you. Council President Marts?
It's interesting you think it looks like a slug, because I think it looks like a blocked intestine. But, you know, to each their own. So first off, I want to, I want to add that, to thank everybody for all their hard work. And if, in fact, if this, if we move forward with this bill this evening, I think there's a lot of things that we're doing that we are actual regional leaders in. I think, for instance, like our housing plan has been something that SCA, everybody's like, what's Issaquah want to do? What's Issaquah's thoughts? Because they knew that we had a comprehensive answer as part of addressing the moratorium. So, but I, I also want to point out that one of the reasons I'm supportive this evening, because, because there are questions. I think Councilmember Winterstein has, has brought up some, some, some very serious concerns. I think we have an opportunity to do this, and I, and I suspect that in, you know, three-ish years, we're going to take a look. I suspect you're going to get asked to do again what you got asked to do 20 months ago. And so I suggest you keep your dance card for 2021 and 2022 open because I think we'll probably come back and look and see what the effects have been of the decisions that we've made during the moratorium and see what we want to do further. Some of those things may occur sooner, but this, this process is healthy, and, and we did it after we passed the Central Issaquah plan, and it'll happen again.
Thank you, Council President Marts. I still have three council members, some who have asked questions but not actually participated in deliberations, and Councilmember Ray is one of them.
Yeah, I, so I too think that the work that's been done here is pretty spectacular, and I really do like the calling out developer obligations and being very overt about what, what the expectation is. I am really having a difficult time around Gilman Village. And I have talked to too many people who say, you know, what's going on down in Central Issaquah? We're losing all of the charm and character of the city, and part of that is Gilman Village. And as much as I'd like to believe that we could have a good outcome, I have too much historical data that says, if we don't have something that, that spells this out, then we will not get the outcome that we hope to. And I recognize that Gilman Village is one of many historical sites we have in our city, but it is one very significant historical site that is an overt topic to be covered in this plan. And having measurable, measures of success and, you know, city actions is all fine and well, but I think if we leave this question unanswered and we get an outcome that starts to erode the charm of Issaquah, the thing that people really love about this town, it will be very difficult for us to explain our actions tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. So that is not currently included in the package for you tonight, so I'd like you to, while we're...
I understand that, but it is not included in the package to inform me tonight. And so it is not going to be part of what we are going to be voting on, and so...
Unless you make a motion.
That's true.
That's all I wanted to point out. You can, while you're listening to the last couple comments, decide if you want to make a motion. Councilmember Hunt?
I, I wanted to speak to Councilmember Ray's comments on Gilman Village and give my perspective from the committee. So previously, there was language that, that was in there regarding connecting Gilman, a developer obligation, connecting Gilman Village is something like retaining its connection to Issaquah's past or retaining its connection to Issaquah's charm. And I think that, that those are, in my opinion, was that those would be very difficult to enforce because we're basically requiring somehow to, to retain a connection to charm. And I think that, I think that what I thought would be a good outcome was if the city had a conversation with the Gilman Village owners. And that doesn't actually have to be a developer obligation, that can be a proactive thing that the city does. And I think that the place for that should be in the city implementing actions. And I, I support the language as it is currently regarding Gilman Village because it puts the, it puts the need for action onto the city, and the city will be the one to reach out to the owners of Gilman Village and try to, try to make sure that Gilman Village does stay a special place. And I, I totally agree with Councilmember Ray's comments about it being a very special part of Issaquah. I just don't think that, assuming that there will be a major change and assuming that the developer, basically assuming that and then putting a developer obligation, I don't think that that's the right way to approach it. I think the city being proactive is the right way to approach it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. The two remaining first round deliberation comments. Councilmember Romo, Sir Goodman, did you have anything to add? I just marked you down as questions earlier without actually giving you an opportunity to make a statement.
Not, not right now, I think we're...
Any other, so a couple things now. We have been in deliberations for a while. If anyone is proposing to make another motion, this would be the time to do it. Otherwise, I'll be asking for council to vote on the main motion. Deputy Council President Patisse?
So I just, I have another comment. I really wanted to comment on what Councilmember Ray talked about because this is something that I feel incredibly passionately about in regard to Gilman Village. And I'm, I'm really trying to listen to all of the different comments and what came out of committee. And what I would really like to see going forward, and I will, I will just talk about this right now because maybe it will help, is that I really do think that we need to move forward very quickly in terms of historic preservation and Gilman Village being at the very top of that list. I'm not positive, after hearing everything that I've heard tonight, that it is workable to include a developer obligation around Gilman Village in, in the AB this evening. I guess I have some question about that. But I, but I am incredibly supportive of going forward and looking into this right away.
Ask a question.
Hmm, yes.
Thank you. What was the developer obligation that was in the original text?
Figured we were going to get there at some point. Confluence.
There it is.
Be the blue one. Retain Gilman Village's property connection to Issaquah's historic past. That's where we started. And I think that's why Councilmember Hunt said that seems really hard to enforce. So we started there. Let me see if I have it. I don't have it on this, oh. Oh, hey, look at this. So here we're, so we started with 2.3, and then I offered a couple different alternatives to 2.3. One was, prior to pursuing any development permits for Gilman Village, discuss opportunities for preservation or reuse with the city. That would have been a developer obligation. And the other was 2.3.2, incorporate some of the existing historic buildings into any redevelopment project. Obviously, we... Obviously, when you're thinking about spectrums, that one would be kind of the most significant. So, these were the things we talked about at committee. At the end of the day, we kind of focused on the middle one, which then really became more of a city action for us to initiate, and that's where we landed. So that's what's coming out of committee.
Thank you.
You look puzzled. Did that help or make it?
No, I mean, I, those are not clearly, I mean, that's why the committee didn't come forward. That is, those are not the, the right obligations. And, and I am struggling with what that is too. That's why I wanted to see them, you know, as I was trying to figure out what the words are and what we were trying to accomplish.
Sure. So the, so the problem is, I mean, if, if you, if you really want to, if, part of it is what's, what's a win? And if a win is to preserve Gilman Village as is, then really it would be probably the city coming forward and purchasing the development rights off that property. And, and then it gets, it gets retained as a historic designated property within the city. But that would be something that I think to Councilmember Martz's position, well, Gilman Village is truly an important piece, but so is the Village Theater. You know, and then what about the dairy? I mean, so, you know, so the thing is, you know, Boam's chocolates. I mean, so, so the question is, how do you start that conversation? And do you start it with Gilman Village? And I think what came out of committee is, we need to have that conversation. It maybe shouldn't start with Gilman Village. It should start with the inventory to let's, let's see what we've got and then let's strategically talk about how do we talk to those property owners to try and make sure that the things that we do find unique to our community, that we're not just lucky, that they just happen to kind of ride along with us for, for our life here.
So, President Martz. Looking at his face though. Not sure if we got him where he needs to be or wants to be.
So, the, so the hard part about this, and I say this having no idea who owns Gilman Village and having never talked to that person once in my life, is we've been in this moratorium for 18 months. And I don't, what you said is that we haven't had any conversations with the person who owns Gilman Village. If that person were here and asking us to do something, then I would totally be with you, Councilmember Ray. And because I consider it like wonderful. I, you know, I eat at Tantalus and I eat at Bangalore, I think that's what they call it now. And, you know, love that that's part of our city and feel that that's sort of an extension of Old Town. So I, I'm with you on that, but we just don't have anything to grasp it on right now. And, you know, the alternative is to go back in for another six months of moratorium and try to figure it out. And without evidence that the person involved wants, is, is actively engaged with us, I'm, I'm hesitant to do that.
So, looking to see if anybody wants to make an additional motion or we'd like to move to vote on the main motion. Councilmember Winterstein.
Well, I don't want to make a motion. I don't, I don't want to do that. It was interesting to hear debate about a motion that wasn't made. That was good. It was really good conversation and I appreciate the points that were made. I think the next thing that's going to happen, you're, you're going to call the question. And I, earlier this evening, I, I said specifically that the redid, the redone visions and the elements that are there, I think are very significant. And I think they in total meet the, what my expectation was when we adopted that portion of the moratorium. And that, that because of all of the regulations we've added and kind of repeating this myself a little bit, that, you know, we've done a significant amount of work. We've highly regulated the, the central area. And that, and I think that the, the developer obligations are a step too far for me. And, and so, and so this is for me difficult to support when I think a portion of it is a little bit of legislative overreach. We've reached very far. We're making a big difference already with what's in place, should it be lifted immediately. And so I'm going to vote against the proposal. It's not event, it's not against the visions as you're showing up here for each of the neighborhoods, but it's against the idea of the inclusion of the developer obligations and then require them with code. I think they're going to be very problematic and I think they're a little bit too far for us to be going.
Thank you. Any other comments or ready for the main motion? More, last one.
He's going to talk about all the work that's been gone on, that has gone on and we have made tremendous, tremendous progress. I just want to acknowledge that this has been extraordinarily challenging for a lot of people, not just staff and all of the people who volunteered their time to work on this for countless hours, but also the community, folks who have properties that they wanted to redevelop and develop. It's just been really very, very challenging. We've had some unfortunate consequences that, you know, that resulted from the moratorium that tends to happen. People got caught up in it and it's not a, it's not a happy occasion, it's not a happy tool. I think it's very unfortunate that we got pushed into a corner where we had to take this action. So I, I want to thank everybody for their patience. I also want to stress that even though we've put a lot of work into it, that, you know, it's, it's certainly by far from, you know, perfect. And as you heard Keith, he expects to revisit this and I fully expect that to happen too. But it's been very challenging and so I just want to thank everybody for their patience. And I just want to acknowledge that I'm sure we all realize how challenging this has been for the entire community.
Thank you. No other hands going up? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2838 relating to central Issaquah, amending sections 1.1, 1.1c and 1.1d.2 of the central Issaquah Development and Design Standards and adopting by reference several amendments to the central Issaquah Plan, the sub-area plan within Issaquah's comprehensive plan, by updating the district visions, changing district boundaries and changing boundaries of central Issaquah and as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Nay.
Vote carries six to one with Councilmember Winterstein opposed. I'd just like to do a check with council right now. We're approaching 10 o'clock. Would you like a five-minute recess? Yay, five-minute recess. We are back from our recess and the last item under regular business this evening is AB 7576, Amendments to the IMC Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units. This item is coming out of the Council Land and Shore Committee. I would like to continue to invite Keith to stand at the podium, our Director of Development Services and Economic Development. And Keith, for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I was going to bring another jacket so I could at least look a little different for this third one, but I didn't quite get that motivated. So, Agenda Bill 7576, accessory dwelling units. So to set a little context here for you all, we, one of the, one of the things that we did last year was we adopted a housing strategy work plan. And within that, we identified nine different strategies, dealing with both affordable housing and housing diversity. And both of those things were identified. We, we got together our planning commission, our economic vitality commission and our human services commission, and we set them all in this room. And we had a number of meetings where we talked about housing and what, as a community, we were really trying to get to. And diversity and affordability were a couple of the big items. So, strategy number one was to remove barriers to facilitate the construction of accessory dwelling units. The idea here was we, we don't have that many as an, as an overall percentage of our total housing units. And, you know, part of it was trying to look at why, why, why were we not getting as many per residential unit as some of our peer cities? And so as we went through our codes, we identified a number of things that basically drove the cost of providing accessory dwelling units up. And so what really we're trying to do with our code amendments that are being proposed this evening is to try and remove some of those obstacles that are keeping us from getting more accessory dwelling units. So I'm just going to go through this list very quickly and if you want to ask questions, I'm, I'm happy to pause during any of these. So ADUs will not be charged school impact fees. ADUs will not pay traffic or park impact fees. We cleaned up a definition within our code that an ADU is not a duplex because different regulations apply to duplexes. We did a clarification for pre-existing ADUs, how you can bring them onto the books and make them legal. We have clarifications, sorry, Councilmember Lambert, we have clarifications for removing an ADU. And you might say, well, why would somebody want to remove an accessory dwelling unit? And the problem is, is they have to pay an individual payment to Metro Sewer. And so it becomes a cost as soon as the homeowner no longer gets benefit from that, that additional sewer charge becomes a cost prohibition. And we actually just took an ADU off the books in our community for that specific purpose. The next one was size. So what the code that's in front of you is proposing is that we limit the size of an ADU to 1,000 square feet with the director being able to increase it to 1,300 square feet if it meets specific criteria. And, and there was a conversation about that at committee and we might talk about that a little bit later, would be my guess. Fire wants a four-foot walkway to the entrance of the ADU. So the ADU gets a separate address and they need to be able to find that front door because if somebody's having an emergency inside an ADU, they don't want to knock on the main residence. It doesn't help. They need to be able to find the front of the ADU. We are talking about removing the land use permit fee, so that's a $500 charge. Right now, it's a level one review. And so basically, which requires an administrative site development permit. And what we're suggesting is making it a level zero, which means you can just come in with a building permit to create your ADU. So that's our code, proposed code revisions. That's the end of my very brief presentation. And just to remind you all, because it's been three-plus hours, we did have one public enter comment during public comment and expressed concern over the limitation of size. So I just wanted to remind you all that that happened earlier this evening.
Thank you, Keith. Questions? Council President Martz.
There is a proposed amendment to deal with that exact question that is in the language of the bill. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, I think.
One assumes you wrote it, so.
I did. I'm just trying to find it.
Shall I read it to you?
Give it to me, maybe?
It's, it's a couple of paragraphs up from the recommendation, from the official recommendation in the front of the, in the front of the packet.
I'm going to pass.
Go ahead and read it.
I am not seeing it. I've been standing here too long. My apologies.
So what it says is, "In response to the committee's request, staff has provided an amendment to the ordinance which would increase the allowed size of attached basements. If council wishes to propose the amendment, the following motion can be made."
Right. So. So, so the, so here's this, here's what came up at committee in a very, I'm going to say indirect way, because I think it was fairly indirect. So right now, we proposed the 1,000 square feet and then the 1,300 max. And so take it, so if you had, let's assume you had like a split-level house, and the footprint was 1,500 square feet. You had 1,500 with 1,500 above. What this says is that you could not create an ADU out of half of your house. You couldn't split it in half and create half, because that would be too big. You'd have to somehow demise that, one of those floors into smaller pieces to not exceed the 1,300 square feet. So I think, so what, what this, this alternative motion would do would be to basically get rid of the max cap. Right?
No. Still says 1,000 square feet.
May allow increased size if the creation of the ADU. So basically, so if you read the last sentence, it basically doesn't, it gets rid of the 1,300 square foot cap, is what it does. So there's still 1,000, but if you can, if you can demonstrate that it basically, it happens within the structure, it could be, it could be 1,400, it could be 1,350 or 1,400 square feet. It could be bigger than what we originally proposed, which was a 1,300 square foot max. So that's what this is saying.
Thank you.
And that's the alternative motion included in the packet.
Yes.
It's an amendment.
It would be an amendment.
An alternative, it's an amendment.
It's not an alternative, it's the amendment. A possible amendment. Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, so, a couple of questions. So, 1,000 square feet is pretty large. I live in Old Town, that's bigger than many of the houses in my neighborhood that are 800 to 900 square feet. And, and so I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to fill all the conversation that happened to get to this. And you started to limit on some of that. If you have a 3,000-square-foot house, 1,500 or 1,500, excuse me, and you really want to split that in two, is that really an ADU, or is that a duplex now? Is my question, because 1,500 is, you know, an accessory dwelling unit to me is small. I tell you, I grew up in a house like that. It was a two-story house, and the address was 1831 and a half, because he literally split the house in two, upstairs and downstairs, and I lived upstairs. Right? So I've seen that done, and that makes sense. But we really have two full homes. It's not a unit, which to me is, tends to be smaller. So that, that's the question I'm getting, what that conversation was with that and how that went. Because 1,500, to me, is no longer a unit. That's, it's pretty darn big.
So, so you're getting, so we're definitely blurring the line between ADU and duplex, right? It's getting closer. We're still, I think, have a distinction in that an ADU has to have an owner, property owner has to live either in the ADU or in the main unit. So there has to be a property owner on, onsite in one of the two units, whereas a duplex, you could just rent them both out to, to unrelated families. So, so I think there is still a little bit of separation, but you're right. I mean, one of the reasons why, and if you look at, so one of the things that we provided as an attachment to the agenda bill is comparison of a number of other cities. And so there's a table, it's Exhibit C to the agenda bill, and basically, there's only one other city that doesn't have a max square footage in all the cities that were inventoried for accessory dwelling units. So, so this is pretty, if, if the council wants to pursue the amendment, or the alternative motion, which would not set a cap, it puts us kind of out there as, you know, as one of the more liberal accessory dwelling unit provisions. So the issues that come up, you know, could be things like, once it gets bigger, you know, it, it does accommodate more people, but that could, there could be parking issues associated with that. Right now, you know, our accessory dwelling units require one parking space. So, so there's, it starts to, you know, there's definitely some complexities if the council wants to go with the alternative motion. And I'm going to stop talking.
Another question, Bill?
Just finish that up, because, because one of the things you're doing here is eliminating some, you know, fees, traffic pack fees, park fees, you know, school impact fees. And if you're really adding a 1,500-square-foot house, then, you know, two, two 1,500-square-foot house versus one 3,000-square-foot house, you're probably adding a fair amount of people, probably, which starts getting beyond that thing where those fees, that's why I'm trying to figure where you want to waive those fees. I see that as a much smaller unit. You're waiving those fees because you're not having the impact that those fees are supposed to cover.
Thank you.
That's a question I'm having there.
Did you, did you want Keith to comment on the question? Or was that just a comment?
It's kind of a, I don't think he needs to. It's kind of my own question that I stated and answered myself.
There you go. Question and answer, very efficient. Is there any other questions for Keith before we go to a motion? Questions? Okay. I'll look for a motion. Council President Marts.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number...
2839.
...relating to accessory dwelling units, amending Isequa Municipal Code Chapters 3.63, school impact fees, 3.64, fees for applications for subdivisions and land used actions, 3.71, traffic impact fees, and 3.72, park impact fees, in order to exempt accessory dwelling units from the payment of impact fees, and in order to establish a pre-application fee for review of accessory dwelling units, and amending various sections of Isequa Municipal Code Title 18.O., land use, in order to regulate accessory dwelling units.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? I got people pointing both ways. Okay, I'm going to go, Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Goodman.
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, okay, Winterstein.
It's great. Tonight, we, we just completed a conversation about an amendment that wasn't made yet, even before the main motion, so it's been an interesting evening. These are proposed to help us create more housing, especially housing that's affordable to more people. And it's a key part of our strategy. Size is important, because we don't want to dramatically change an existing neighborhood, a characteristic of a neighborhood. And yet, but at the same time, we also need to have more dwelling units available to people who want to live in proximity, maybe to where they work, maybe they don't have the type of income or household income that allows them to otherwise, you know, live within Isequa unless there was an ADU available. I think there's also some other shifts that are happening within the, our community socially. I know that there are more three-generation homes, households in Isequa than before. That's anecdotal data, just based upon, you know, going door-to-door. And I think the cost of living here is, is very significant. And, of course, those, many, many young people are getting a great start in life, and if they, they pair up with a partner and have a greater household income, they can get started with some, maybe something new that's coming onto the market within Isequa. But there's still a significant portion of people that are here now, and our own children in the years in the future, where it's only going to be opportunities with, such as accessory dwelling units, that's going to allow them to get their, their, a place of their own. And, and so I think this is a very important part about, I think, keeping families together and helping Isequa grow while spreading out the burden of that growth. It's one thing to be talking about adding, you know, 350 units by a transit center. It's another thing of sprinkling the capacity throughout existing, more established neighborhoods, such as Squawk Mountain, for example, where the impact will be very difficult to ever notice, but we can actually accommodate more people. And, and so I think this is very important about, a portion of our, of our strategy. So I'm definitely going to support this motion, and I also want to make an amendment. Propose an amendment. And so, I move to amend the ordinance to strike the language in IMC 1807, 450(c)(4), and replace it with the following. Item number four, size, "The square footage of the ADU shall not exceed 1,000 square feet, excluding any non-living areas such as garage, storage sheds, or decks unless the excluded area is in the location of the proposed ADU. The Development Services Director or designated appointee may allow increased size if the creation of the ADU does not necessitate an exterior expansion of the residence, except for minimal alterations necessary for the ADU to be a functionally separate residence."
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Paul, could you pass down the, is it on your computer?
It's in the bill. I just, unlike others, I depended on people to write it for me.
Okay.
So you already have it.
So I've got two pieces. The original one. Oh, gotcha. Okay. So what I have is, that's, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
"A motion to amend the ordinance by increasing the allowed size of attached basement has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion?" I'll read the exact wording when we get to the... Wow, okay, let's go this way. Councilmember Hunt, Ray, Ramos, Winterstein.
Thank you. I, I think that ADUs are one of the strategies in the housing work plan that do really lend themselves to preserving the character of the neighborhood while adding opportunities for more people to live there. And so, I'm really in favor of making it easier to have ADUs. And I think that, I think that the amendment helps, will help make it easier for some people in some situations to have ADUs. And so, I am in support. I also, when I was looking through the table of what other cities in our region are doing as far as ADUs, I was struck by how specific and how complicated, there are so many different options for sizes and for attached and detached. And I think that, I think that cities are making those, those decisions based on specific characteristics of their city. And in our case, we do have these daylight basements, and I live on Squawk Mountain, so I'm familiar with this. And I think that giving the flexibility to have one floor of a house that's about the size of 1,000 square feet for that attached, or, sorry, for that accessory dwelling unit, I think it makes good sense for our particular situation. And for that reason, I am in support. I also just wanted to add that there was some discussion about, is it a duplex or not? And I think that if, since, since the size limit of greater than 1,000 square feet is on those, is only when it doesn't change the exterior of the structure. You won't have the two doors at the front, you won't have the appearance of a duplex. And so, that's another, for me, that's another critical difference, is that it, it isn't allowing for two buildings to be next to each other of the same size. It's saying that if you have a building above a certain size, you can still make it a, you can still have an accessory dwelling unit inside if you don't change the exterior. And so I don't see how this, so I think that this allows for more housing without changing the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
So I, I too like the idea of accessory dwelling units. It's a way, in our more established neighborhoods, to create, create higher density with, with our existing property. I just have one question about the amendment, and it is that there's no limit then to the size of an ADU, as long as it doesn't change the size of the residence? Is that, is that a correct interpretation of what I'm reading?
Yes.
So, okay, so I could have a 4,000-square-foot house, I could cut it in half, and I can have, I could live upstairs in 2,000 and have an ADU downstairs for 2,000?
Yes.
And then we think that, that whoever moves into that 2,000-square-foot house is probably not going to have an impact on, you know, they're not going to have kids, so they wouldn't have an impact on schools, and they wouldn't, wouldn't have an impact on traffic or parks. So I guess one of the things that I'm, I'm kind of binding up on this, is I like, I understand the idea, but when I start to look at, we're not going to charge impact fees for schools or parks or traffic, that makes a lot of sense to me when it's small, because it's more likely that the person living in the smaller dwelling is not going to use city services. But when I start talking about a larger situation, I can see many situations where they would have impacts on our schools, on our roads, and in our parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, I am 100% supportive of ADUs. And maybe, you know, where I grew up in East Oakland, my family, we had five units on our property, because you just kept building more as you go, and everybody kept spreading out, and we had this last one there, and we just kept renting out the other ones, and my family was finding, I mean, one, the other four, we all rented out. So I know that structure and how it works, and it's, it's, it is good. But I think there is a limit on size, on when you, when you want to make that work. And that's what's, what's holding me up right here, is, is that unlimited size factor. I, well, I'm going to ask a question now.
Go ahead.
So, actually saw this, there's a house on, on Fifth, between Bush and Andrews, and it was a single-level house with a basement, and they raised it up a little bit, and they had a full floor underneath, and it turned out that they rented out, and they did turn it, in my mind, into a duplex. It didn't change the footprint at all. As a matter of fact, I rented the bottom basement for quite a while. But, so, and I saw that happen, and how they changed that, and it, I think that would fit under an ADU here, but it really made two houses on the lot. But I don't know what permitting process they went through back then, this was quite a while ago, but...
So you couldn't, you couldn't raise, so like, one of the...
Excuse me, back, they didn't raise it. It was just a daylight basement, I take that.
So, so like, you know, for example, if this was originally just a single-story garage, and they built a second floor above it, the footprint doesn't change, but the building envelope has changed. And what this is saying is that you could, you could create an ADU. It's, it's kind of most similar to this photo, where they basically turned their daylight basement into a separate residential unit. Any of the situations where you've added structure, either elevation or outward, you couldn't go past the 1,000 square feet if you were going to do that?
Yes, so elevation as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Winterstein and Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. The, it's, I think it's important that this amendment is, is, is working within the existing capacity of the home, and that's, I think that's the way I view this, to use the example of a 4,000-square-foot, which is a large home. My house isn't that large, so maybe I'll use my example of 3,400 square feet. And, and that has a certain capacity right now. Those houses have a certain capacity. What we're saying is that without adding capacity, you can, you can, you can actually make, add an additional dwelling unit. You give another family, whether that be just a couple, or it could be an individual, it could be a couple, or it could be a family, but it, but it's not adding any capacity. Obviously, people are always free today, even now, to do remodels and maybe add a bedroom or something, but, but if you're putting, and that, this happens quite a bit around here. There's a lot of capital going into existing homes to expand them, but as soon as you start pushing the walls out, you, your ADU is going to be limited to 1,000 feet. And, and, and so I'm, I agree with the concern, this, with the, the impact fees by not charging that, because most of the examples of most ADUs that we see up here, you're adding capacity somewhere, but you're adding a limited capacity. And, and we think that type of housing is going to be important, but it's, but to help encourage it, we're going to, you know, reduce the costs by, by removing the impact fees. This amendment is not about adding capacity, and I think it creates options for people to live within Isequa, and at the same time, retain, retain the character of existing neighborhoods. That's why I'm going to, that's why I made the motion for the amendment.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I, I support the amendment. I think the 1,300 square foot that was in the original proposed changes to the code... I think the 1,300 square foot that was in the original proposed changes to the code is arbitrary. I think there are some natural controls here that will keep the concern that there are going to be just, you know, a whole bunch of huge houses that are divided in half. I think that's very unlikely. Number one, as Keith said, the property owner has to live there. So this isn't about creating a whole bunch of spaces, that extra spaces are, you know, twice as many houses that people are going to rent out. They have to live there. So for that reason, I'm comfortable. I think it does create, I guess, I don't know what the definition of capacity is, even though you're not expanding the walls, you are adding people capacity. I just don't think it's a measurable impact. And if we see that there are some unintended consequences, or is there some measurable impact, then we can revisit. I think it's a great tool, and I support the amendment.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel, President Patis.
I too am very supportive of ADUs in general, and I will support the amendment. I think that the one question that I had coming into this was the 1,300 square feet, because I could definitely see exceptions that were falling right outside of that. That would make it difficult. And I think being able to expand the language and give some discretion to the director, but not have that expand, actually expand the residence and the way that the amendment is written, makes really good sense. So I'll be supporting this this evening.
Thank you. Council President Mertz, any comments? Oh, Councilmember Ramos.
So, I probably don't have fear of this really being overused and abused, because it hasn't been historically. But I guess, I just want to ask one more question, and that is, so the extreme example of the 4,000-square-foot house, the owner would have the option to split that into a duplex and go through that at all, or that's not an option?
It depends, it depends on the zone. So some of our residential zones allow for duplexes, and some do not. They all allow for accessory dwelling units. So if it was a 4,000-square-foot and he wanted to create an ADU, there's a covenant on the property for that, they couldn't basically create a duplex. So that, unless the zone, unless the zone allowed it, and then they could, they could request to turn it into a duplex.
Okay. All right. And then just, just standing again, we're talking extreme examples here, and I don't think the ADU has been used enough. We'd like to use it a lot more, most cities would, and to provide much more housing and at different affordable rates. So I'd say that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray, you had your hand up.
This is, this may be a nonsensical question, but can I have more than one ADU on a parcel?
No.
Okay.
Unless you move to Oakland, apparently.
Yes.
That explains a lot.
Additional questions or comments before we go to the vote on the amended motion? Seeing none?
Wait, I'm sorry, point of order. Are we voting on the amendment? Or, I'm seeing a head nod from the clerk's office. We're not voting, we're not voting on the amended motion, just the amendment.
Amended, yes.
Yes, we're voting on an amendment. Correct. A little confused. I'll read it, so we're all clear on what you're voting on. Move to amend the ordinance to strike the language in IMC 18.07.450(c)(4) and replace it with the following. Number four, size. The square footage of the ADU shall not exceed 1,000 square feet, excluding any nonliving areas such as garage area, storage sheds, or decks, unless the excluded area is the location of the proposed ADU. The Development Services Director or Designated Appointee may allow increased size if the creation of the ADU does not necessitate an exterior expansion of the residence, except for minimal alterations necessary for the ADU to be a functionally separate residence. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes unanimously. The main motion. Let's go President Mertz.
So, you know, I spoke earlier about places where, although this isn't, this was not a requirement on lifting the moratorium, I consider this work part of what came out of the moratorium and out of the good housing work that we did. This is an area, if we're getting ahead of some other cities, I'll tell you that everybody's talking ADUs when we've had these meetings at SCA about what can we do about housing, what can we do about housing. ADUs are on everybody's lips. So if we're getting, if we're getting to be a pathfinder in that area, then that's awesome, and hopefully, and I'm quite confident that down the road, when I list greatest hits of things that I'm proudest of, assuming this passes this evening, then this is going to be one of them. So I'm very much, I'm very much in favor of the motion that I made.
Other comments on the main motion? Before we go to the main motion, any other comments? Okay. This is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2839 relating to accessory dwelling units, amending Isequa Municipal Code Chapter 3.63 School Impact Fees, 3.64 Fees for Applications for Subdivisions and Land Use Actions, 3.71 Traffic Impact Fees, and 3.72 Park Impact Fees, in order to exempt accessory dwelling units from the payment of impact fees, and in order to establish a pre-application fee for review of accessory dwelling units, and amending various sections of Isequa Municipal Code Title 18.O., Land Use, in order to regulate accessory dwelling units. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll put, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The last item today is the good of the order. Do council members have anything for the good of the order? I have a couple of quick little things. Our next regular council meeting will be June 4th. The agenda at this time will include a public hearing on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, a vote on the end of the Talus Development Agreement, with the remaining discussion item being the zoning designation for Talus, Parcel 9, and the Opportunity Center Resolution for Transit-Oriented Development. On June 5th, council will have a special meeting, a strategic plan charrette at the senior center, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m., where we will, we'll be looking at the input we have received during our public process on our strategic plan. Anything else to share? Let's go President Mertz.
Yeah, so 2018 is turning out to be quite the year in the Mertz household. So one of the three Bronberg brothers, my mom's little brothers, Uncle Rick is in hospice at the Bath VA in Bath, New York. And so I just want to say, Uncle Rick, I love you very much, and all the Mertzes are with you.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? There is no executive session this evening, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:37.